We'll call this meeting to order. It's 9:01. Welcome to the October 18th Board of Supervisors, 2022 Board of Supervisors Meeting. As customary, we commonly do a moment of silence. However, it seems like we might have a moment of honor today. I didn't know if Supervisor Sabatier wanted to conduct that.
Yeah, we just have a retirement happening from our staff, a long staff member, a longtime staff member of the County of Lake and making our community safer. And that is Detective Todd Dunia, who will be retiring. I don't know if it's today or if it's very soon coming up, but wanted to kind of celebrate his accomplishments. Todd has been really important for the, what is that? The shopping, the kids' shopping program. Shop with the Cop program. He's been absolutely instrumental for that, has been supportive of many other community activities as well. He spent the last 10 years of his career as an investigator in the Major Crimes Division, was the, and with the Lake County Sheriff since 2007, and was also named Investigator of the Year by the California Sexual Assault Investigators Association in 2021. Just wanted to share this appreciation for the hard work that he's provided and the service he's committed to the County of Lake and want to wish him and his wife and his family the best as they move on into retirement and thought today would be a good day to honor him for that.
All right. Supervisor Simon, can you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any of those today from any supervisors? Jessica, I see you on Zoom. Any extra items? No? All right, with that, we'll move forward to our next item, which is approval of the consent agenda. In regards to the consent agenda, these are items that are commonly non-controversial, however, can be pulled for further discussion either at a later time or right away. So it looks like we have Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pull item 5.7, 5.11, 5.18, and 5.28 for further discussion.
7, 11, and 18?
And 28.
Oh, and 28, all right. And then, let's see here. Okay, any others from the board? All right, so I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to pull? Joan, it looks like you would like to. Can you come to the microphone and please state which item you would like to pull?
5.3.
Okay.
Tree mortality, thank you.
5.3. So 5.3, 5.7, 5.11, 5.18, and 5.28. Are there any others? And any on Zoom, do you see?
Didn't see a hand.
CAO?
Yes, 6.2, I mean, I know it's not under consent, but to be continued for a future date.
Okay, continued. All right.
Right.
And, okay, all right. So from that, bring it back to the board. For action, Supervisor Sabatier?
Let me know if I missed anything. Mr. Chair, I move to approve 5.1, 5.2, 5.4 to 5.6, 5.8 through 5.10, 512 through 5.17, 5.19 through 5.27. I move to approve those from the consent agenda.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. Johanna, can you please conduct a roll call?
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. And so we'll come back to those different timeframe. We will now move on to our timed items. Our 9:05, it's 9:06 right now, so we can move on to our public input. Public input is discussion of items that are not already on the agenda. You can speak for three minutes about something that you're wanting the public to know or bring up an issue in your district or area that you live in, but just know that we can't comment or address that. We may refer you either to the director or have your supervisor reach out to you. So with that, it looks like we have a couple and, all right.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Olga Martin-Steele. I am from Clear Lake Oaks, California. I am here to invite you all to the One Team One Dream Hands Up Lake County Small Business Competition, which is on November 5th. I have invitations that I'd like to turn over to Clerk of the Board if I could. And I just got some extras in there in case you want to pass them around. Don't worry about the date that says contact me by the 16th, just contacted me before November 5th. So I just briefly want to say that we have eight contestants. We created a new category called the Startup Business Category and then our regular Established Business Categories. And I'm really pleased to say that the entire county is pretty fairly represented. In Lakeport, we have one; in Clear Lake, we have two; and the rest are countywide. So thank you for your support of this project, and I hope you can make it. We are asking the Chair or the Chair's designee to present onstage one of the cash prizes. So hopefully that will work.
Hold a big chair.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right. Is there anyone else that has public input? I do have documents here, but I think it's regarding tree mortality, so we'll come to it at that point. Okay, are there anyone on Zoom that has a public input?
No hands.
All right. With that, we'll close that item and move on to our 6.2, Presentation of Blue Point, but we're pulling that. I'll just read it off. Is that okay? Yeah. Presentation of Blue Point, Planning for the Preparation of Countywide Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan will be pulled until, I want to say, a later date?
To a date, yes.
Date to be determined.
Yes.
Okay. And so that's our 9:06. It looks like we have a half hour before we move on to our next, so we will try and knock out some of these others. Consent agenda? Is there any preference?
Up to you.
Well, I think we'll go ahead and do 5.3. Continuation, approved continuation of proclamation of existing of a local emergency due to pervasive tree mortality. And so this has been pulled by Joan Moss, if he'd like to come up and discuss why he would like to and, yeah.
Natasha will take it.
Please come to the, I see it.
I'll come after her.
Okay. So I'll open it up to the board first and foremost. If there's any comments or questions about this or just first before I open to the public input? Nope.
I'll just make a comment for the rest of the public, just in case. I think this needs to be continued. There's work being done in order to try and figure out how we can get support. This seems to have been told to us that this was something we needed to do in order to gain better attention for tackling this issue. And so continuing it, it helps to continue that conversation. So at least to provide a brief summary as to why this is on here and why I will be approving this.
Okay. Any other comments before I open it up to public? So I'll open it up to the public, for the public. If you'd like, I see you have documents here, but please come to the microphone, state your name for the record, and then we'll start your three minutes. And I can start that for you, Johanna.
Joan Moss, independent journalist and a resident of Wildcat Road. There have been new developments since I last spoke. I want to share them with you. There were noises in the back of my property, and there were loggers unlimited preparing to tie a string around my tree. And I asked him to see the order. He showed me the order. I told him the property owner's listed is not accurate. It was Mike Bridges and Westfall. The trees were on my property. I went the very next day to Lake County. Sure enough, the property where the trees were on was not Mike Bridges. He'd moved away, and Westfall was the official owner. Then I wanted to question the Atlas people. They're new. And one truck drove by, and he was going to stop and talk.
Mr. Chair, Joan, I.
These are specific instances that Jessica Pisca told me to send to her.
This item is to continue.
Yes, that's what it is.
The emergency proclamation.
Tree mortality. I don't agree with it. I'm asking Jessica to pull it and to, I want the whole story.
Whether we pull this or not, the conversation you're trying to have is PG&E has contractors that will continue. This does not affect what the utility is doing. This is our opportunity as a county to do the proclamation and to work with the state and other agencies to help bring.
So that the issue, yeah.
Jessica asked us to register our complaint. That's what I'm doing.
Joan, the other thing is, is that once this is approved again, you'll have more, you'll have more time to make your complaints and work with the people that are trying to help with that.
I'm objecting to tree mortality.
So you don't want there to be an emergency? Is that what you're saying? Or you do?
I have specific instances of misconduct.
Okay, so.
By the people who are killing the trees.
So my suggestion is that you have every right to provide public comment. I don't think this is connected to the item that you're pulling.
I believe it is.
Well, let me explain to you why.
The loggers unlimited.
Joan, please, let him talk, and then you can talk.
This is not about PG&E and cutting down trees. Tree mortality is about the drought and trees that are dying because of the drought and the fact that beetles are taking over our trees and killing our trees. That is the specific tree mortality issue. You have an issue with PG&E trying to clear their wires, which I think should be a public comment, public input comment, not a public comment on tree mortality, because that's a whole different subject.
I am very concerned about tree mortality and they're killing live trees. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Natasha? Is this the same, or is this?
No, this isn't about, this was supposed to be in the public comment.
So before, it wasn't supposed to be related to tree mortality. Okay, well, that's what I thought, because you both.
No, no, no. I'm, she's, her and I'm me, you know, we're just.
Okay, one second. Ms. Grant, should I open up, let them have their public comments?
Yeah, this was supposed to be a public comment. I signed over there for a public.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes.
All right. So I'm going to close public input on this item for tree mortality.
That's me.
And then I'm going to open public input, then I'm going to reopen it, and then you two can have your three minutes to speak in. That's what I was just going to do. So I'm closing public input, bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve continuation of proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to pervasive tree mortality.
Yes, please. Okay, second.
So I have a motion to end a second. Johanna, please conduct a roll call for us.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. And so what I'll do is see if we can get a motion to reopen public input.
Mr. Chair, I move to reopen item, I apologize, I should know the number right off the line.
6.1.
6.1, public input.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. Please conduct a roll call, Johanna.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. All right. And so with that, we will open public input again. I've already explained the dynamic of it. And so I see Natasha, you're up at the microphone, so we'll go ahead and start your three minutes when you state your name for the record.
Okay, Natasha Robinson. Let's see here. I do agree with Joan that there are abuses going on by PG&E. Right now, there's been two weeks of cutting above my neighbor Larry Hill, who's rather ill and elderly. I kind of think it's elderly abuse, because they're, they've been cutting down his trees, a lot of them, without any permission. They did not call him, and they did not come by his house. So I think that's very, they are definitely abusing their powers of, and property owners are not being respected. As far as treesafety.com, this is for Jessica. That, you gave me that website. It doesn't exist. It does take me to the main page of PG&E. They do have a complaints section, but in the complaints section, you cannot complain online. They don't offer that service. It's only if you write a letter or if you call them. And I think that's rather scandalous, because if you call them, they can disregard that and later say it never happened. If you have to mail a letter, you have to buy a stamp, get in your car, go down to the post office and mail it. So it's actually quite, you know, it's inconvenience for most people who have a very busy schedule. So why don't they let you complain online? That's like we're in a modern age, you know? You know, that remains to be answered. Let's see. Now, this also is to Jessica. I've written a complaint today, and I have, the elderly man has his complaint that he would probably do a lawsuit perhaps, but there's three complaints that I submitted today for you to give to PG&E. But, you know, I feel like really my complaint is coming to you guys. It's like a fox, chickens, and a farmer. You know, the farmer's supposed to step in and say, hey, there's grievances here, and that would be you guys. You're our representatives. I would, I would hope that you would come out on behalf of the people and the neighborhoods and the mountain that, you know, are being violated right now. I'm in, I'm in favor of cutting dead trees, but they're not, they're doing way excessive amount, definitely overstepping what their own policy is and disregarding their own rules. So I come to you guys to say, hey, there's this grievance, there's these violations. I can't, as a chicken, because, like, there's the chicken and then there's the fox. How do I go to the fox and say, hey, you're taking my chickens, you know, or I am a chicken, you know, like, they're, they're the ones creating the crime. It's like me, the victim, going to the criminal saying, darn you, you know, you're, you're robbing me, you know, that's no good. They're not going to listen. I need a representative to step out on, on the community's behalf and write a letter, maybe.
All right. So I have the documents here. I'll give them to Jessica, and we'll go from there. Thank you for your public input.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I am, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to be coming in the office today because I'm not feeling well, so I'll need that email to me. And I, you know, I need to have the complaints come from the property owner. It sounds like that's what's happening. But I do want to correct something, because the, the email address that PG&E gave to us at our September meeting was treesafety@pgne.com. That, that is the email address to respond to them. PG&E has been invited to the Cockberry Council meeting this Thursday, so that is an opportunity for people to speak directly to them, and that's at 6:30 PM at the Little Red School House.
All right, Joan? And once you state your name for the record, I'll start your time.
Joan Moss, thank you very much. The only thing I'm going to tell you is that I did get a new phone number from the crew who ran for me, who left the property. But they said if you have a complaint, dial 1-800-PGE-6000. I had a television camera with me, and they were very uncomfortable with the television camera. And I didn't know how to run it, but they thought I did, and I did forget this one switch. But I did get their voices. I did get their voices. And it's going to be part of our documentary, my documentary, called Disaster on Wildcat Road. And I am very concerned about the mortality of our trees. I go for the proclamation. I think it's wonderful, but I don't think it's called for to cut down live trees. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, do you see any other online possibly, just in case? Since I opened.
No hands in Zoom.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. And it looks like we don't have any other public input. Close that item, and we will move on to the next agenda item, which is, let's do some of these seven points. It looks like we have a couple of these. 7.2.
I do want to say that we have Scott Harder online right now, and also, because I know that was one of the items that was pulled.
5.28.
Yeah, and I also see that behavioral health is here, just in case.
Let's do those then, you're right. So we'll go with 5.28. We'll go backwards, authorized special, well, sitting as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, authorized special districts administrator, assistant purchasing agent to issue a, issue a purchase order not to exceed $60,000 to Thomason Associates for the purchase of a Gorman Rup 4 self-priming sewage pump. And if, it looks like we might, we have Scott online. Scott, or Supervisor Sabatier, I'll let you start with why you pulled it, and then Scott, if you would like to comment afterwards and give us your insight, that'd help.
So the reason I pulled this is we were missing this attachment that's being shared right now on the screen for both the public and the board. We were supposed to, we are requested to consider a purchase order not to exceed $60,000 for a self-priming sewage pump, and I just wanted to make sure that the actual purchase with the details of it were provided to all of us before considering the item. And so Director Harder was able to provide that, and again, it's being shown to us. And I think the top page is really the most important. The rest is minute, minute detail that, to be honest with you, I don't understand enough. Yes.
Okay.
So it looks like that's been added to the agenda as well, so that's good. But I'll let Director Harder speak on if he wants to add anything. I just wanted to make sure and provide the information to both the board and the public.
Sure. Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier and members of the board. As Supervisor Sabatier noted, the backup documentation was inadvertently left off the board memo agenda item, and so we have provided the fore quotes that we received, ranging in price from about $56,000 to $110,000, and we would ask the board's consideration for awarding it to Thomason Associates.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments from the other Scott? I'm just kidding. I'll open it up for the public. You're, you're, you have two screens up there, Scott, so I'm just teasing. Any public input on this item? All right, hearing no other.
And I see none on Zoom.
All right, so we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, sitting as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, I move to approve the purchase order not to exceed $60,000 to Thomason Associates for the purchase of a Gorman Rup 4-inch self-priming sewage pump.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. Johanna, please conduct a roll call.
Director Simon?
Yes.
Director Sabatier?
Aye.
Director Pisca?
Yes.
And Director Crandall?
Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Director Harder? Let's see. Is Shane in there as well? Because I think the next one is in IT. Is it IT?
Yeah, I don't see.
So we'll move on, we'll go to 5.7. So we'll move on to item 5.7, which is A, adopt resolution authorizing the agreement between the County of Lake and Advocates for Human Potential for the Department of Care Health Services, Care Healthcare Services for the period of April 29, April 19, 2022 through December 31, 2022, and authorize the Behavioral Health Director to sign the agreement and B, waive competitive bidding in accordance with Section 2-38.2 of the Lake County Code, and C, approve agreement in the amount of $294,000 between COAR Design Group for Facility Design Services and the County of Lake for the Behavioral Health Clear Lake Facility Expansion Project, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I pulled this for the reasons of Part B, the waiving the competitive bidding. The original company that we worked with to start the design process was, I want to say it's off the top of my head, 2014. And eight years later, I feel that there should be a statute of limitations of when we can continue to work with a company versus restarting an RFP. And so I'm in favor of Part A and Part C, but Part B, I have problems with.
Okay.
I think that we should be doing an RFP. And I was told that there's a timing issue, but at the same time, I feel uncomfortable, and I just want to make sure I continue on and be consistent with ensuring that we do our part to make sure that we know who we're giving money to and that we're providing the service and the best benefit to our community with the money we're providing to those companies.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Elise, I see you're on, and so is April. Didn't know who wanted to start out first, but if you had any comments or insight as to this agenda item, please go ahead and unmute and give us that comment.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Supervisor Sabatier for expressing your concerns regarding this item. Yes, unfortunately, there is a bit of a timing issue. This grant, the award, was announced in April of this year, and we began working on the planning, it's a planning grant, to be able to apply for larger funding rounds to support infrastructure development. And so we were doing all of the work, and unfortunately, due to delays on the part of the subcontractor, the Department of Healthcare Services subcontracted out grant management services with another company called Advocates for Human Potential. And due to some delays in the communication between the subcontractor and the HCS, we actually didn't see the contract for the grant award until quite recently. And so unfortunately, that put us on a bit of an abbreviated timeline, because I was reluctant to begin spending money or investing, investing a lot of resources in that without a contract present. So that was my reluctance, and now we are trying to streamline this as fast as we can so that we can be in position to apply for these larger funding rounds for the renovation of the Clear Lake Clinic. So that's what I have.
All right. April, did you have anything to add to that, or? Okay. All right, Ms. Grant?
Yes, I would just note that the department cites 238.2, Section 2-38.2, which is not in the public interest. There are three different qualifiers under that, so you may want to inquire of the department which of those they feel is applicable, just to have it on record.
Okay. Yes, so Elise?
I apologize, I'm not intimately familiar and don't have that pulled up, so.
Ms. Grant?
Yes, it would be whatever the rationale was to waive the competitive bidding and not in the public interest would be based upon a state of emergency, which I don't believe anything has been stated to address that. The unique nature of the goods or services precludes competitive bidding or a determination that competitive bidding would produce no economic benefit to the county. So again, it would have to be one of those three under 38.2.
Thank you so much, Ms. Grant. So I, and unfortunately, Lars is not here, Director Ewing. So I believe based on our discussions that it would fall under the last, the third category, that competitive bidding process would bring no significant economic benefit to the county.
All right. Okay, so any other comments from the board? And so what I'll do is I'll open it up for the public at this time. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item on the agenda? Not hearing any, I'll bring it back to the board for potential action. So I'm seeing it's a resolution initially on A, a motion on B, and then another motion on C.
So Mr. Chair, I will offer the resolution?
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I will move to waive the competitive bidding in accordance with Section 2.38.2 of the Lake County Code?
Is that the?
Due to no economic benefit.
Due to no economic benefit on behalf of the county.
There we go. All right, so I have a motion?
I think I got it right.
Yeah.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct a roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Name.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall? And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And then C.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement in the amount of two hundred and ninety-four thousand between COAR Design Group for Facility Design Services and the County of Lake for the Behavioral Health Clear Lake Facility Expansion Project and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye. All right. Motion carries. And so with that, we will, it's nine thirty-two. So to stay in accordance with what we're doing on our timeline for the agenda, we will move on to our six point three, which is a public hearing, hearing of notice of violation and notice of nuisance and order to abate. Property owner, Thomas Carter, location one six two two Hundred Point Road, Upper Lake APN zero two two dash zero zero one dash zero five. And our Community Development Director, Mariaa Turner, is coming to the, is coming up to be seated and present this item. And I see Code Enforcement Manager, Marcus Beltramo, on his way up as well. Good morning. Yeah. Come on up, Mary Jane and Thomas. I did get a note that it will be continued, but is there still a process we need to go through or?
There was an email sent this morning from the representative for the appellant requesting a continuance, typically that, which we forwarded to the board and to the clerk. And typically that request is made to your board so you can address it today.
Okay.
Whether or not you open the public hearing is totally up to you. I'll refer to Anita.
Ms. Grant, should we have some of the presentation done or should we make that determination initially?
It's, it, it really, I think, would be confusing to the public. If you're going to continue the matter, it makes more sense, I believe, procedurally, to simply continue the matter. And obviously, a request for continuance can come in and be agreed upon by the parties, but it's your board that determines whether to grant it.
It's in my district and I, I think it's a good idea. I'm fine with that. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Yeah, I did see the request and I'm okay with it.
Supervisor Sabatier? Supervisor Pyska, I can't see you in the. All right. So with that, do we need to do any action or anything of that nature? So should I open it up to the public briefly or something like that?
You can open it up to the public with regard to the request to continue. And the request, if your board agrees to approve it, which it sounds as if you will, you do that by motion and you'll continue it to a time and date certain, since this was already set for public hearing.
So just one question or comment I have. It's asking for the November eighth agenda. So just seeing if we have any vision on what that agenda looks like right now.
Johanna?
Okay.
I think we agreed that all the code items would be at nine thirty. So that's like our running time for code. So it can be at nine thirty.
Thank you for that. So with that, I'll briefly open it to public input for the matter of continuance. And I don't see anybody in the chambers. Actually, I do see somebody. If you'd like to come to the microphone and state your name to the record, it will start your time and go from there.
Only regarding the continuance.
Yes.
I think this is a very important item. And I want to make sure the public has access to the agenda materials that are out there. We can read our own, our own, we can read and decide and think in the meantime. Is the, is the material going to be outside? This is unusual because Mary Jane Fagaldi used to be the Community Development Director. And here is Mariaa Turner. And my good friend, Tom Carter. This is very.
So you want to make sure that the information's out?
Yeah. Can we read it in the meantime?
I'm sure it will be, it's been posted to the agenda. It's already been made available already. So.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Very much. This is unusual.
If I, if I could add to that as well, the request for continuance was based on the appellant's intention to request an estimate of fees that were accurate at that time. And so we already have that. We ran an estimate this morning and have that available. We'll make sure that gets uploaded so the public can, can view that as well.
Thank you for that.
There's public record materials available to the public, right?
Yes, we said that. Thank you. All right. So are there any other people on Zoom?
No, I don't see any hands up at all.
Thank you Supervisor Sabatier. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to continue this item to November eighth.
Nine thirty-eight.
Nine thirty-eight.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. All right. With that, the motion carries. And we will see everyone at November eighth, nine thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't believe it would be five minutes.
I was thinking the same thing.
You got a better knock on wood.
Sorry, sorry.
All right. So let's see. It is nice. Okay. So we'll move on to our six point four, which is our public hearing, consideration of appeal, notice of nuisance and order to abate for two hundred Hoover Street, Clear Lake Oaks, APN number zero three five dash four zero four dash one eight zero, appellant Brett Hill. With that, I will go ahead and give the floor back to our Community Development Director and our Code Enforcement Manager.
Just one moment for our tech to catch up to our, our.
Okay, I think I unmuted the appellant Brett. So with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, please. I'm sorry.
So this is an email from the appellant that we just received yesterday.
Thank you.
Good morning to the board. My name is Marcus Beltramo. I'm the Code Enforcement Manager of the Code Enforcement Division in the Community Development Department. Today we come before the board for a hearing. An appeal was made in regards to a notice of violation and a notice of nuisance in order to abate that we issued for the property. The property, the subject property here is two hundred Hoover Street. That's in Clear Lakes Oak, California. The property owner, Brian R. Barrington, trustee of the two thousand fourteen Barrington Revocable Trust dated April ninth, two thousand fourteen. And I'd also like to add that this property is situated or located in the roadmap task force area. Our authority to come here before the board today is in Lake County Code, Chapter thirteen, Article one, Section thirteen dash seven point one. When a request is made, a hearing, a wonder, a request is made, a hearing can come before the board of supervisors. The board shall proceed to hear testimony of the enforcement official and to review any other pertinent evidence related to the matter. A hearing notice was provided to Brett Hill. In this case, Brett Hill is the appellant. He is the person who is staying on the subject property. Brian Barrington is the property owner. He lives out of county. This notice was mailed and emailed to those, to, based on the information that we had obtained. So the notice was served in accordance with the county code. As we always do, we always start with the property information so we can give proper context. Again, the property look, address is two hundred Hoover Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California. The property owner is Brian R. Barrington, trustee of the two thousand fourteen Barrington Revocable Trust dated April ninth, two thousand fourteen. The zoning of the property is R one, and it does have an overlap of a scenic combining zoning designation. That means it's within close proximity to the highway. The, the property size is approximately point one two acres. There are no improvements on the property. It is a vacant lot. Just for some further context, that's Highway twenty. The high, the, the property highlighted in yellow is the subject property. To kind of give you an idea where it's situated or where it's located, it is in a densely populated area in the Clear Lake Oaks proper area. So we received a complaint of this property. We went out and we assessed the situation. Again, it is a vacant lot. There is a fence that splits the property in half. That fence is towards the rear of the photo on the left. It's towards the rear there. So it's kind of, looks like two properties, but it is one property. There's just two sides to that fence. And as you can see on the left, there's a pile of rubbish and debris, some, some, what you would consider trash. On the right, you see a photo of what is trash. Also located on the property is an RV that's been situated or located on the property for more than thirty days. This is, it is our, based on the information we obtained, this is the RV that the appellant Brett Hill is currently occupying and residing in on the property. I'm not residing there. And also, those are not current photos. This is all being.
Sir, we'll, we'll give you the opportunity to speak once the presentation's over. So.
Sorry about that.
All right.
And he is correct. These are photos taken on the dates listed on the photos. There has been some, there's been new photos that are, that reflect a different situation here. On the left, you can see the RV. You can see some screening material. On the right, you can see a pile of trash in the rear. Here's a better picture of the trash, the hazardous vegetation, the RV. And this is the other part of the property. This is the part of the property behind the fence. As you can see, there's vegetation and there's trash and rubbish on this part of the parcel as well. Based on the information, the photographs that were taken, a determination was made that the property is in violation. Several violations were cited. Violations of Chapter thirteen, Article one, Section three point one subdivision E five, which means that, you know, the land or the property is being used contrary to Chapter twenty-one, which is the zoning ordinance. E six, E seven, E seven is basically garbage, rubbish and refuse and weeds on the property. Eight, E eight subdivision E eight is unsightly appearance within a scenic corridor. And subdivision E thirteen is for inoperable vehicles. And then a violation, we also cited a violation of Chapter twenty-one, Article forty-one, Section forty-one point two for open and outdoor storage. Again, the property is zoned for a single family dwelling. There is no single family dwelling. That's the primary purpose of this property. Therefore, any storage on the property is considered an accessory use. It's secondary and subordinate to the primary. In this situation, there, the primary purpose has not been fulfilled or met. And we did issue a notice of violation that allows us to impose administrative fines. And the notice of nuisance order to abate was also issued to abate any issues on the property. We did receive a hearing request again from the appellant Brett Hill. I believe he's present here today. In his appeal, he is, he puts as his, or he states as his reason, we have an RV on the property for storage. Also, the lot has been, and this is his words, over with brush, debris, and I am cleaning the lot up for prop, for the property owner as it's a fire hazard. Again, the issue for us is the RV has been stored on the property for more than thirty days. Therefore, we believe that's not a temporary issue. We believe that to be a permanent issue. And the RV has not moved from its location since we took the photos initially in, I believe, August. We did receive this email. This is the document that I handed you. We just received this yesterday. I believe this needs to be entered into the, on the record. This, I, I believe this is from Brett, but it's came from a Kim Bauer. I believe that to be the mother of the appellant, and she lives across the street on Hoover. I'll just read it. To whom it may concern, my objective, my objective to this notice of hearing is this exclamation mark. I got full permission from the landlord to vacate and store my trailer for the clear cleaning of the property up at two, two hundred Hoover Street, Clear Lake Oaks. We didn't put the trailer there, not knowing all these codes or if we were violating any. My motor home is fully contained. It's registered and it's insured to me. I'm able to move and drive my trailer at any time as the picture will show. Also, the pictures will show that I cleaned up the lot and I still have some work to do. I haven't bothered anybody. My mom lives across the street and I do stay in her house. She has lived there for fourteen years. I feel like code enforcement has been strongly out of control harassing everybody in the neighborhood, wasting gas, leave in the company's truck running while he's out taking pictures of stuff that is not appropriate or even needs to be addressed, as in my mom's yard sale. She was in capitals. She was in her rights and he was still taking pictures and harassing her. And if it continues, I will have it in writing. It's out of hand and I'm sure you'll be here and from a lot more people. The bottom line is if I'm violating some kind of city or county code, then give me a date and I will move. As I said before, my trailer is in excellent condition and I'm only doing what I got permission to do. Or if I need to get a permit. Thank you, Brett Hill.
Thank you.
And so basically, that's our evidence. The lot has been cleared of the debris and the trash. The issue, the lone remaining issue is the RV that's being stored on a vacant lot. At this time, staff is recommending that the board uphold the notice of violation and the notice of nuisance in order to abate and to direct staff to move forward with the nuisance abatement procedures. And that concludes our presentation.
Any questions from the board before I open it up to the appellant?
Just, just for purposes of being clear, the abatement you're looking to do is to tow the RV and get it out and, because that is the only remaining issue that is on the property?
Yes. At this time, what we are asking the board for approval from the board from is to bring the property into compliance and to remove the RV and to restore the property to its original state of a vacant lot. Right now, it's our opinion or the determinations we've made that the RV is being stored on the lot. Again, it's been there for more than thirty days. We believe that's not temporary. We believe that to be permanent. And if the RV does move, it sounds like a simple resolution to the matter.
I have a question. Mr., you might have said this, but Mr. Barrington, has he?
So we've been in contact with Mr. Barrington. We sent him an email with the information. We've spoken to him on the phone. I exchanged voicemails with him. We've been playing a game of phone tag, but he indicated he would not be able to attend this meeting here today. He did not, I did not get a reason for that, but we did email him. We did send him the information. We did let him know that he has the opportunity to speak here today. He did, in one of my conversations, state that he gave permission for an individual to stay on the property. He wasn't aware that there was any violations that would be occurring by the individual. by the individual staying on the property, but he would not be able to attend here today.
All right. Mr. Uh, this, Brett Hill? Hill? Yeah. Mr. Hill, if you'd like to go ahead and unmute and we'll take your comments and.
I mean, he pretty much stated everything in the, in the abatement. I'm not living there. However, I stay at my mom's. Everything that was said in the email, pretty much is current. My mother, like I stated in the email, she lives across the street. And she, she wanted to speak on my beha-
Not sure what just happened, but.
She wanted to speak on my behalf, if possible.
Did she swear in? Did she swear? We need her to swear in if that's, if that's going to be the case. Right hand.
With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
One second. Before you speak, I see Supervisor Pyska, you had a question or a comment. I'd like, sorry, I didn't see that.
That's okay. So, is the, the property owner has, and I guess the tenant, have they been made aware that it is a violation to store an RV on an unimproved property?
My understanding from my officers is they made it clear verbally and in the notice itself, it was made clear that they cannot store items on the property, that it has to be a vacant lot. I think we made repeated attempts to communicate that to the appellant.
And I see, just to add, I see it here on the July 11th nuisance order, or is it the notice of violation order that it says, "Remove the recreational vehicle from the property" as well as the garbage, rubbish and refuse. And that's dated July 11th?
I wasn't finished.
Oh.
Okay. Thanks. I just wanted to be clear about that at this moment. But the other thing I'm concerned about, are, what are, what were those, were those telephone lines or cable lines? Because I'm very concerned that someone was living on this property without any utilities or water or sewer or power or hookups.
I believe the lines that you're referring to, they appear to be electrical cords. And from speaking with my officers, that's the indication that they gave me. They could not establish that they were connected or plugged in, but those appear to be electrical cords that were laying on the property.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. That's, that was my concern. Thank you.
Electrical cords like?
Like extension cords.
Extension, okay, that's what I was wanting.
Things to hook into the RV to charge it.
Someone else's property or something like that?
Um, I'm not in the spec, to speculate what the purpose of the extension cords were, where they went to, but.
They're actually phone cords.
Okay. All right. So, any other questions?
Can we fix the sound issue? I don't know what's going on. If you're hearing something and talking in two different devices, but every time you speak, Mr. Hill, there's always an echo and a reverb. And I don't know if you have a phone and a computer that's on Zoom.
Okay, tell them we got it.
There we go.
Thank you.
I think it sounds a lot better. All right. So, we'll go ahead and, ma'am, if you'd like to speak.
Okay. I would like to say that, first of all, we do have permission from the owner. My son did get permission by, from Brian actually store the trailer. He is fully aware of it. The cord that's hanging over there is a phone line. I do want to say that when, the first thing I want to say is that when I did go to the county code to help my son file the appeal, Marcus there spent at least 10 minutes to try to talk me out on, about filing this appeal. Why he did that, I have no idea. So, with that being said, I finally filed the appeal. We did get served. And then, three weeks later, we got this white paper on the fence stating that we have a, you know, an appeal. But I was just wondering why it took so long to give us the, you know, the second notice. But anyway, with that being all said, my son's not doing anything. He stays at my house. I've lived here for 14 years. The gentleman never stated to us about, he just said that we were in codes. He didn't specifically say that what we were doing wrong. And then, the last thing that really made us upset is Marcus said that if he wins this hearing, that he's going to tow my son's trailer. And I'm like, well, why? You can't really do that until after the appeal, until we, you know, until he wins or you win. So, I just want you guys to know that my son's RV, he could start it right now and drive it out of the lot. Right now. He could drive it out of the lot. So, I want you guys to know that. And for him to even say that he could just tow his trailer like that, I mean, come on. You can't just tow someone's trailer. You have to give us a notice. It's very, they've been very unprofessional. I've lived in this town for 14 years and across the street here at this house. And I have never seen code enforcement so out of control in my life. The gentleman has gone to every single house here. He's tapping, putting notices on every single fence, even if they don't even live there. The guy is leaving the trucks running, leaving the keys in the car and going around taking pictures. I thought somebody down the road would sure steal one of those trucks someday. And it's just, it's just out of control. And something needs to be done. And you guys aren't going to just hear from me. You're going to be hearing from a lot of people. When he was taking pictures of my hus, my, the lot across the street, not only was he taking pictures of my house, taking pictures of my car on the highway, my yard sale sign, everything. Like I said, I've lived in this house for 14 years. I know my rights. I'm allowed to have so many yard sales a year. After that, I have to get a permit. I already got a permit. I know my rights.
I have a quick question. Are you on the same property as well? Are you on the same 200 Hoover Street? Are you at that property as well or are you somewhere different?
So, sir, I live directly across the street, like what, 20 feet maybe?
Yeah, okay.
20 feet. And where the place is at, it's Betty's Taco. And then Brian owns the lot behind Betty's Taco. And then it's the previous lot. And we haven't even cleaned up that lot by Betty's Taco because it's out of control. We've only gotten to the lot where the trailer is at. And I'm telling you, like I stated, I've lived here 14 years and you should see that trailer. My son has done a damn good job cleaning that up over there.
Okay. Well, thank you. And as much as I would like to talk about that. As much as I'd like to talk about that other property next to Betty's Tacos, I won't make any comment right now. But is there anything else to add on this or?
Well, it just makes me very upset that you guys aren't being very professional about this. I think you guys need to address this stuff a little bit differently because people are getting out upset. It's harassment.
Social media is going to be.
And then you guys are going to be posted all, a lady said that she was taking pictures of your driver yesterday, that she was going to put them all over social media because of the way you guys are handling things out here.
Okay. All right. If there's anything else, sir, would you like to add to this, Mr. Hill?
No, that, that's pretty much, that's pretty much well-stated.
Okay. So, I don't know if you had any comments or anything to add to that?
There is one other issue that I did not address earlier. There is a shed on the property as well that's in violation of the zoning. And that would need to be addressed as well.
The shed was on there. It's been on the property since I've lived here. I, we have no idea even what's in the shed.
Okay.
Yeah, we have no, we don't even have keys to it.
Just a small wooden shed that's been there for over 10 years.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And.
The, the one issue is that our order doesn't address the demo of the shed. So, we would have to renotice and go through that process. But it is in violation of Chapter 13, Article 1 subdivision, 13 dash 3.1 subdivision E5, which means it's in contrary to the use or Chapter 21, that you have an accessory structure without having a primary structure on the property. But we would have to renotice and go through that process for that shed.
Ms. Grant?
Yeah. It's, it's going to be a separate and apart notice because I don't see a shed listed here. And a notice in order to abate is not all encompassing. So, if you get there and see something else, you can also abate that. The other thing, just as a point of clarification, the nuisance in order to abate in the last sentence under Sub B of the first paragraph says there's also garbage, rough rubbish and refuse beginning to pile up that needs to be removed. I had understood from the hearing that that's been taken care of. If it has, then your Board may wish to delete that sentence because it's no longer applicable. If indeed it isn't.
Okay. Right. And so, anything else, sir?
Um, I don't have anything further to offer other than the fact that this property is located in the Roadmap Task Force area. And if an officer, part of the procedures is to go house by house, street by street to address those issues in that area. Again, the purpose of the Roadmap Task Force is to enhance and improve the living conditions in the Clear Lake Oaks proper area. And that is a goal that code enforcement's committed to.
Supervisor Spatia?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, there was a comment about maybe deleting the line for garbage, rubbish. Is that gone?
To my knowledge, it's gone on the parcel where the RV is. But per the statement of Ms. Bauer, it sounds like on the other side of the fence, there's still a pile that needs to be addressed.
Would it be possible to amend it to there may also be garbage? That way, if there is, we can abate it. And if there's not, then there's nothing to abate?
No.
It needs to be.
No, because that evidence just came, if it is indeed evidence, came forward today. So, again, there's a due process concern with these things.
But, but the pictures from August do show garbage piles on both properties.
And it's not two properties. It's one property.
Both sections of the same property.
So, it's the same property. One's across the street from the other?
No, no, no. There's a fence that splits the property in half.
Okay.
And the pictures did show a garbage pile on one side and a garbage pile on the other side of the fence.
Then the notice.
Yeah, but they're different addresses.
How is that possible?
I don't know. I called the county and they told me that the one by Betty's is First Street. And then the one where the trailer is, is 200 Hoover Street. So, I don't know. I'm just telling you what information the county told me. So, yeah, they are two different addresses that they stated.
The notice of violation, Mr. Chair indicates one address and then one parcel number. So, if it's split in any way, perhaps code enforcement confirmed.
Can I pull up the PowerPoint again so I could show you the map of the property?
Yep. Can you please mute while we go through this process? And then when you're ready to make a comment, just unmute at that time.
So, as you can see, the highlighted parcel is the parcel that's in question. And that's where the issue's occurring. Betty's Tacos occupies the parcel that's next to or buts the highway.
Right.
So, I'm not sure what we're referring to here. I believe we've identified the correct parcel. And the issues occurring are attributed to this address, the 200 Hoover Street address. I believe we've.
And that has a fence in the middle of that, in whatever's encompassing the yellow?
That bifurcates the two sections.
Okay. So, it's not the parcel that's to the, from us right of it. That's just a whole different parcel?
The right of it's a whole different parcel. That's what I thought.
Ms. Grant?
Your Board may want to inquire, ensure that it's the same owner then if it's just one single parcel?
Based on our research, it's one owner, the Brian.
Mr. Barrington?
Barrington Revocable Trust of April 9, 2014.
Supervisor Spatia?
And so, thank you for that. My second question is to Mr. Hill, if your RV does work, and since July 11th, we've been asking for your RV to not be in violation of our code, which is to place an RV or any vehicle or storage sheds or things like that on a vacant lot without a house, I just hope that you have a good plan of where to put your RV because it can't just also go anywhere either. There needs to be a good plan for that. So, that's, it's not a question. It's more of a statement that RVs need to be placed in the appropriate locations. And hopefully, you have a plan for that. But we have here evidence that we have been asking to have the RV removed very explicitly in the paperwork since July 11th. And if it's a good working order, I'm kind of curious as to why that has not happened. I guess that's kind of a rhetorical question, but I'm done.
Mr. Hill, do you, do you have an answer for that? Hello?
Hello?
There you go. Did you have an answer for that question? All right. Not hearing anything, so.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi. So, sorry, I, my phone's giving me trouble. So, this is Kimberly Bauer again. So, to make a long story short, like I stated before, if my son's in violation, I have all this property over here. He is able to park the trailer over here. We got permission for him to store it over there, so it wouldn't be right here. And that's where we went ahead and stored the trailer. If not, it will be towed out today and parked right over here.
I thought it was in working order.
It is.
Okay. So, you said that you would tow?
Did I say towed? I meant drive. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Now, if he has to move the trailer, it will be moved in one day.
Okay. Here's the other thing is, you mentioned you had permission from the owner. Yet it's still a code violation. So, I mean, I can give permission to anybody about something. However, as long as it's, if it's against the code, then it, it's not, it's not a permissible act. And it could be, it could be a violation. So, just wanted to let you know that.
I don't understand what you said.
What I said was, what I basically said, ma'am, is that even though you have permission from the owner of the property, does not make it, does not excuse the violation. Do you understand that?
Okay. Right. No, I understand. And that's why we're here. Because we don't know. We don't know the codes. You know what I mean? We don't understand all these codes in city and all that. So, that's why we're here. For you guys to decide if we're in violation.
And sometimes it might behoove anyone that has a situation as such to do the proper thing that's been asked first and then ask from, from another standpoint if that's a proper violation or something of that nature. So, I don't know if there's any other questions or anything.
I, I have my hand up. If we can take this down, then you can see me better and have my hand.
Sorry, sorry. Go ahead, Vice Chair Pyska. I need to get my computer up so I can.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're, we have not heard from the property owner. The property owner has been noticed. The people that are speaking today are our neighbors. So, no, the property owner needs to understand that they can't have these violations on their property. So, yeah, the RV cannot be there. It cannot be stored there. We can't be any more clear than that. But ultimately, this conversation should be happening with the property owner.
Yeah, because we had no idea.
Okay. You didn't receive the July 11th, the violation letter?
So.
Just go ahead.
So, the notices are not, are issued, are mailed to the property owner based upon the county records that we can, listed with the, with the county. And then we also post a notice at the property, but those notices address the property owner. I believe when the notice was posted at the property, the appellant did see the notice at that time, which prompted them to issue or file a request for this hearing today. So, that's, without that notice, I don't see how they would not know to file an appeal.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
No, I just, just wanted that clarification that the property owner was noticed. I think you made a statement earlier that you spoke with him on the phone and he could not make it here today. So, I just wanted to clarify that issue, that the property owner was noticed on this issue.
The property owner was noticed. We emailed him the information as well. We've dealt with this property owner in the past on other properties that he owns in this county. I did have a conversation with him where he did express that he gave permission, but he did, was, he was not aware that the situation would be in violation of the county code. And again, property owners' permission does not trump the county code.
Vice Chair Pyska, see your hand up.
You're on mute.
Oh, you're on mute. You're on mute. There you go. There you go.
Okay, so, I don't know what the notice of appeal that keeps getting referred to is, but it's not coming from the property owner, it's coming from a neighbor, is that correct?
Well, the neighbor is the mother to the tenant.
Yeah, not coming from the property owner, and that's who it should be coming from.
Anyone can file appeal, right?
We, you know, possibly Council Grant could probably better, um, opine on this matter here, but our policy right now is, anybody that has an interest, or is a property, or has property ownership, we will entertain those appeals.
Okay.
I mean, we feel justified in our evidence and the investigation that we did, that we can substantiate a violation, and we feel, uh, providing due process is not, uh, a burden.
Ms. Grant?
Thank you. And providing due process wouldn't be a burden, even if they couldn't substantiate the, the grounds for the nuisance, it, it just exists, it's a constitutional requirement. The, um, in, in this case, someone is going to be affected by the action, it's perfectly appropriate for them to file an appeal.
All right. Hey, um, any other comments? Oh, uh, and because it's a hearing, and we swore people in, I don't have to open it up to any other public, or, or should I do that, do so? Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this item, and if so, probably need to swear you in as well? Okay, if you would, uh, please raise your right hand, and, uh.
With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right. Please come to the microphone and state your name for the record, and.
And for the record, there was a nod for yes, since the cameras can't see her.
John Moss, I've watched these hearings for a long time. I remember a Lake County supervisor who cried during one of these hearings. I want to know, in the past, as long as there was progress made, um, there was another 30 days that the supervisors gave them to solve the problem, and I wanted to know if that might be, there has been progress made, and I was wondering if the, uh, woman said she's going to remove the trailer today, if maybe you could, uh, have a continuance of this, and see if there's improvement in another 30 days. And secondly, I wanted to know how much her appeal cost, for my own personal reasons? Is this a different kind of appeal, um, or does it also cost $1,000 to appeal your decision? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so with that, uh, don't know if there's an answer, um.
Do I answer that?
No.
No?
No.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So, there was no? All right. Um, do you guys want to hear that, that, answer the question, or?
I don't.
No. No, okay. But there's no, Ms. Grant?
I, I can, if your board likes to speak to the fact that, that, um, your board has previously, uh, denied the appeal and issued the order with a caveat that it would be deferred for 30 days to allow, or deferred for 10 days, or whatever. Your board has always had that, that authority, which, of course, you know.
All right. All right, Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I think, um, I wanted to just kind of be clear, sorry, I'm going back to the garbage comment on the, um, abatement. Since we have pictures that there was garbage there, um, we're being told that there is still garbage there from the appellant, at this point, we leave it as is. If there is garbage, it will be abated. I just kind of want to make sure, 'cause I didn't feel like we really cleared that up to make it final before we make some kind of decision. And I'm looking at Ms. Grant for the answer to this.
If there is garbage, refuse, uh, debris that's been identified in the notice, and it exists on the property under this parcel number belonging to Mr. Barington, who's listed as the owner, then yes, it is, it can still be left on the notice. If it turns out the property is a separate parcel, or belongs to someone else, et cetera, then no.
Absolutely.
All right. Is there any other public input on this item? I have Zoom, but I don't have my.
Oh, I do see that Brett's Moto G Power has a hand up, but I'm not sure if that was a previous hand up, or if that is for a new statement.
It's the same people, but if they could use one device, though.
I'm sorry about that. I, I lower my hand now.
Okay. All right, so, uh, close public input at the time, and bring it back, uh, for further discussion or action. Um, go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
I'm, uh, kind of looking at, uh, you, Chair Crandall, since this is your district, what kind of timeline, 'cause I think within 24 hours, within 48 hours, or whatever code enforcement, uh, deems appropriate time to be able to go back out there and assess the situation. Sounds to me like it's easy to move.
Yes, it is.
I, I would love for that to have already been done. Since July 11th, it was very clear as to what the request was, and more than 30 days has been provided, since July 11th to October 18th. Uh, and I just kind of wanted to see what your thoughts were on, um, possibly having a timeline to conclude this.
Um, it's a tough one. I, I, if it's not a, if it's not a burden to the Code Enforcement Department, uh, 24 hours, but then we, we still have the full week to bring it back, right? I mean, that's the, that's the issue, no?
No, we can make a decision to continue with the abatement if, within 24 hours, it has not been vacated.
All right.
I believe that's what we were discussing as a caveat, um, for our decision made today. And I would be in support of that if you think 24 hours is a good timeline.
I'm still, the only thing I, I really wish is that, I know that it stated that the, uh, anybody can make an appeal. I really wish that Mr. Barington was present, because I, or at least on Zoom, or on the call. I think that would be helpful, but you're stating that he was notified and said he just couldn't make it, and, um.
Well, honest, can I?
Ma'am, I'm not speaking with you. I'm talking to Marcus.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Um, Mr. Barington, I just, and I guess that was more of just me talking, is saying that I, I, you had reached out to Mr. Barington, he knows about the date, couldn't make it, that, is it more of a thing where he wasn't concerned with it, he's just like?
His, again, his statement to me was that he did give permission, but he was unaware that providing that permission to allow someone to stay or store items on the property was not, he did not believe it, or was not aware that it was a violation of the county code. So, he did not, he gave his permission, but again, um, he was unaware that it would be in violation of the county code. That was his statement to me on the phone.
Ms. Grant?
Of course, the property owner's going to be responsible for any costs that are incurred by the county in the cleanup, so that goes to the garbage refuse, if the, if the county has to go out and tow the vehicle, that would include that, so the property owner will be responsible. So, if he's determined not to attend, he does that essentially at his own legal risk.
Yeah. So, um, did, I hear you, um, would, do you have another statement to make? Okay. So, I, I think, Supervisor Sabatier?
And, yeah, just to kind of dig a little further in what you're saying, uh, we're obviously having a conversation with somebody who is not the property owner. There's the potential of assessing a fine, or assessing, uh, someone's property who's not here, and maybe the question, uh, for Mr. Beltramo should be, is he refusing to be here, or unable to be here?
Right.
Because maybe at that point, a continuance, in order to respect the property owner, to have that conversation with them, to make sure that we're not dealing with.
Right.
A tenant issue versus actually dealing with the property. I, I mean, I'm ready and willing to move forward, but I think you do bring up a good point, that they have, that the property owner has not been given the ability to represent themselves, uh, and we moved, if they're unable to.
I think he has, it's just that he's not here.
We, we mailed the notices to him, we emailed him the packet for here today with all the attachments, um, we let him know that, you know, we mailed the, uh, the notice was mailed out, I believe, more than two weeks in advance, um, so he did, and we did let him know he could appear via Zoom, or do an e-comment, or provide a statement, we did let him know that. Um, but, uh, we will obviously follow the, uh, the wishes of the board here today. Um, I would like to reiterate, there is a simple solution here.
If he just moves it?
Move the RV, clean the trash off, and we're in a good place. Compliance has been attained, and I believe that to be the simplest solution and the, uh, most, uh, the path of least resistance to compliance here.
Ms. Grant?
I hate to complicate matters further, but it's my understanding that the people who made this appeals, only contribution to this is the parking of the RV.
Right. Right, and so.
So, the garbage and refuse would still be the responsibility of the owner, who's apparently been duly notified of the abatement action.
So, I think if, um, if they, they move it within 24 hours, if they don't, I think then, then we can move forward from there, as, like it was stated, uh, I think I'm okay with that.
The, uh, the garbage and the refuse, is there a timeline for that?
Um, Ms. Grant, I think you s-
If, if your board determines to deny this appeal, there was no appeal as to, by the property owner as to any of the remaining actions. So, at this point, that can simply go forward. I think that your, your board is going to deny the appeal, but allow, I believe you said, 24 hours to allow the, um, the hills to, to move the RV that had been placed upon a portion of the property, and that's really all you're doing. But, uh, as far as the overarching violations and moving forward with the abatement, your board will affirm that today.
All right. And if they don't move it, what happens at that point?
If they don't move it within the 24 hours, then your board will dictate that, I'm assuming you'll direct staff to move forward with the abatement.
Okay. I'm fine with that, uh, I'm fine with that. Yeah. All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, uh, move to deny the appeal, uh, of notice of nuisance and order to abate within 24 hours if the RV has not been removed, uh, all the nuisances that have been listed on the notice of violation. And I'm kind of giving a side eye to Ms. Grant to make sure that that was correctly done. That's good, okay.
Second.
So, I have a motion in a second. Joanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
If we could just get additional clarity, please, uh, there's not been any discussion regarding the notice of violation and the, um, assignment of fines.
The notice of violation and the assignment of fines that were, um, listed on the first violation, is that what you're saying?
So, we issued a notice of violation and a notice of nuisance in order to abate.
Isn't that a, a separate thing to assess those fines at the end, when things are completed, rather than now?
Well, so, there's an issue, can, uh.
Go ahead.
Can you pull up the PowerPoint again, please? The code, um, for a request for hearing, the code directly addresses a notice of nuisance in order to abate. It does not directly reference a notice of violation, but we posted a notice of violation and a notice of nuisance in order to abate. There are two different mechanisms to do, perform two different actions, one to impose fines, and the other to abate the issues. Um, I'm just, I guess we're seeking clarity here today, obviously, we're getting clarity on the order to abate, the notice of violation is still outstanding, and, um, we're in a position to, um.
Implement administrative fines?
Issue a citation, an administrative citation.
Okay. And I'm, I'm fine with that, considering that you've asked, and they haven't complied to that measure, if that makes sense? And is that something that we can conduct today, Ms. Grant?
I, I just don't see it in the.
It's up here.
It's on the backside.
So, on, in the code section, a hearing before the Board of Supervisors regarding a notice of nuisance in order to abate, so, the code was, directly addresses the order to abate, but does not address the notice of violation, I figure.
But I don't see a notice of, um, I see a notice of violation, but it doesn't say, uh, 'cause I've been through your paperwork, you, you and I have worked together on this, I don't see one that states, here are the violations, and these are the, uh, costs, it doesn't have anything in there that says.
So, that would be in the citation itself.
Yes, I don't see a citation on, that was submitted to the, uh, property owner, or placed on the fence, or.
So, the notice of violation is the first step in the process, we were waiting for the outcome, pending the outcome of the hearing here today, to issue the citation. The citation would then would have all the statutory information that's required, and then the, uh, amount of the fine. So, we were waiting for the outcome here today, before we proceeded with the administrative citation. And the code, directly, in the first sense, only references a hearing for a notice of nuisance in order to abate, so we're just seeking clarity if we can move forward with the administrative citation, or if there's another avenue or other information, how about, how we should proceed.
Supervisor Sabatier? Or actually, Ms. Grant?
I think Ms. Grant will probably have better words to share than me.
I, I think that, um, the documentation here is to the notice of violation, which does exist, but again, if the violation is the recreational vehicle, and the vehicle's going to be moved within the next 24 hours, your board may not wish to issue a violation. And again, the violation, the notice went out to the property owner, so the notice of violation will be against the property owner. Um, if at this point, your board, because you're, um, denying the appeal, and there was no appeal by the property owner, if you want to move forward with the violation process, you, you may do so. If the gravamen of the violation here is the RV, and you're giving time to have that moved, then you, you may not. It depends upon how you're viewing the process at this point.
I, I'm all for moving forward, I think we need to set the standard of, here is a notice of violation, take it seriously, what are we doing about it? We've been waiting three months, four months, the 30 days have gone on, and on, and on, um, and both, especially the owner, who is the responsible party for what occurs on their property, has not seemed to taken any action, and I think that, uh, this is something I've been asking for you guys to do, and today, I'm not going to deny that we need to move forward with that, because people need to recognize, when we're asking you to meet our code, we really need you to meet our code, uh, and if it's not done within a certain amount of time, that violations, uh, citations will occur.
Ms. Grant?
And just to clarify, this notice of violation, again, goes to the property owner, the people who are making use of the property have no part of this.
All right. All right. Any other comments, or, okay? Did you want to?
I don't think I need to change, uh, my, uh, motion for the fact that it's just a part of the process, uh, outside of this appeal, because this was, our violations in existence, yes, keep moving forward, and so I would say the citations is just another step in your process. Okay?
All right. Okay, there anything else on this? All right, so let's close this item. Um, let's see, move on to our next, but, uh, in the meantime, we will go ahead and take a short break. Um, and that way, I can get clarification as to, I see we have the, the hearings for, um, the eight, what is it, the assessment appeal hearings, um, and, but then we have an eight, or a 10:30 here. Um, wanted to see with staff what, what we should do after the break from there.
Assessment appeals?
Assessment appeals?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will take a short, uh, five-minute break, and then move on with the assessment appeals, and then come back after the assessment appeals to 6.5. All right. All right, looks like we're back from our break, we'll go ahead and move on to our, uh, item eight, assessment appeal hearing, sitting as the Board of Equalization, in that, we'll start with 8.1, consideration of request by the Lake County Assessors' Office to continue the following assessment appeal applications, 03, 2020 through 10, 2020, Earthways Foundation Incorporated, a Delaware nonprofit corporation, to the MACAC in 2023 Board of Supervisors' meeting. And with that, it looks like we have the, uh, Assessors' Office present, Assessor Rich Ford, and Dave Schwinger.
So, um, just want to do a quick introduction, um, thank you for your time this morning. As you've seen in the past, we've, are now trying to schedule this twice a year, this being our, our October appeals, and then we'll do one in May. Um, just for future, Dave is the one who's actually in charge in our Office of Appeals, so basically, what I'm going to do is hand this off to Dave, uh, for training purposes, and also because that's his responsibility. Um, I'm here for support and answer any additional questions, but I will pass it on to Dave. I will pass it on to Dave.
Did you have something, Ms. Grant?
Uh, if your board needs any type of information about the standard procedure, I'm happy to review that with you briefly. If you're comfortable, then I'll-
Yes, please, please.
Okay. Um, you've already convened as the local Board of Equalization. Uh, with regard to the appearance of the property owner or the appellant, um, when that is applicable, if an item is taken up and the appellant's not here, then your board should always inquire us to notice. Um, the hearing procedures themselves, um, it's generally just standard hearing procedure, testimony under oath. An assessment appeal hearing is not subject to Brown Act requirements, so no public testimony needs to be taken. Um, there is a burden of proof, depending upon whether it is a residential owner occupied. I don't think you're going to have issues with that today. Um, so again, it's, it's essentially the standard hearing practice. The, um, the burden of proof does determine who goes first. Um, when it is an owner occupied residential property, that person presents their case first. Uh, in all other circumstances, generally speaking, the assessor will present first. These are largely procedural items. You've got withdrawals, continuances, and some claims as to untimeliness.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Anita.
All right.
Okay.
Dave?
Good morning. Uh, my name is Dave Schwanger and for the first issue, 8.1, um, we are withdrawing the continuance and are requesting a stipulation. Um, we're presenting to the Board, Johanna, as a stipulation between the Assessors' Office and the applicant. The applicant provided a contract, which the property is, um, pending sale, um, that we feel is the highest and best use of the property and market value. So the stipulation is taking that value back to the original transfer date and offering it to the Board to be stipulated, and we'll do roll corrections and reissue those bills.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Sorry about that. I have two questions. One is for Ms. Grant. Um, the fact that we kinda advertised to the public that there was a request to have a continuance and that now we are doing something different, is that within our scope of making that change on the agenda on its face?
Yes, these, these hearings do not have to be Brown Act compliant, so this, this has the same flexibility that any other quasi judicial hearing would have, without the need for specific notice. The item itself, the property involved, is all on the agenda.
Okay. And then my second one, I know that there was already a continuance from before. Do you know, uh, Mr. Schwanger, what date, what it was extended to?
The continuance was extended to this date.
Okay, this specific date.
The applicant, and they waived their right for the, the two-year statutory limitation to be heard. So that was, uh, a waiver, it already signed. So with this, we can complete the, uh, assessment appeal and move forward. And this would also, since it is a supplemental assessment, um, changes the base your, so for this point, from the point of transfer to the current tax bill would all be corrected by this appeal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? And, uh, so with that, I don't have to open up the public on this one, so, um, I guess we're ready for action on this one? Or with the statement made, uh, it's already conducted? I just want to make sure.
Yes, I, I believe a copy of the stipulation's been made available to you? Okay. Uh, as long as that has been and your board has no further questions, then you may simply approve it by motion.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm gonna take a shot at it then. Um, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Assessor's stipulation, uh, for property or rule, uh, would that be all right, just there? Or do I need to?
I think you can just say for the property described in 8.1 on the agenda today.
For the property, um, described in item 8.1 today.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Uh, Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
I think you guys are commissioners now. So Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sabatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Pyska?
Yes.
And Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Uh, we will now move on to 8.2, consideration of request by the appellant to continue the following assessment appeal applications, number 68-2022, Worldmark to the May 2nd, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting. With that, I'll give the floor back to, uh, Dave.
Yes, um, this is the appeal 68-2020 for Worldmark. They already did a continuance once, and you're allowed by Property Tax Rule 323 to do one appeal without contestant. The second one or third has to be approved by the Board. We'd actually asked the Board to deny this, and we usually don't do this, but we can't get any communication with, um, the taxpayer, and they're all protective appeals. So it, these are just kind of going into limbo. So we would ask that at this point, that they've already got their one continuance and they're not doing anything to move the, the case forward. So there's no cause at this point for a continuance.
All right, is there any questions on that Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, and I, I'll just share my slight concern. Um, the numbers are vastly different between the Assessors' Office appraisal and the belief of the value of the property, um, that the property owner has. But we just saw a stipulation that we just approved where there was quite a gap as well, and what we approved was a lot closer to what the appellant had appealed for. And there was a difference of almost $5 million, just in the last one that we did. Here's a, there's a difference of almost $10 million, and a part of me is concerned that, is there maybe a similar situation where we are looking at things through a different lens, uh, of what highest and best use might be for that property versus what is actually eligible for the property, uh, based on the property owner's belief? And this would be an absolute burden on top of a, um, a business that I want to make sure that we don't place the wrongful burden on property taxes. So that, that's, I, I don't know if I'm expressing myself correctly.
Yes, yes, I, I can explain that. So for Worldmark, Worldmark's original value was their sales price. They enrolled, it was base your value, that's not contested. What the, a few years back in 2014 or 15, they started these appeals where they went on a different valuation to say, this is a, a seasonal resort that's only, should be counted by the occupancy in the summer. So that doesn't really apply to this case. The other case was a sale that we didn't accept the sales price and that we went through a process to find out what that sales price should have been. So there, there are two different aspects. So the base your value is their base your value, and that's what they're being taxed at. They're saying there's an occupancy issue, that this should be modeled as a seasonal resort, and our view is it's occupied year round, so it's not closed during the wind. That's basically the same. That's why it's never come to the hearing, because when you show the occupancy, it's a year-round occupied property.
And so just for clarification, this was, um, based on the sale of the property, the last sale of the property, uh, is what we have, our base, and then it's been increasing by a maximum of 2% per year based on Prop 8. This is not a reevaluation of the property or revaluation or any, uh, anything else that may have triggered that?
That, that's correct. It's a Prop 13 value from the original certain, um, sales price that goes, that increases annually statutorily by 2% or the Consumer Price Index, whichever is less.
Right. And, and there was no appeal based on the original?
No, they, they, they accepted the original base your value. That's, that's not being contested.
So it looks like there's, uh, someone with their hand up, Debbie, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. If you have your hand up, but could you please unmute? I don't know if you're, uh, representing this item on the agenda or another one. If you could please clarify that for us.
So Chairman Crandall, this is Matthew. Uh, Ms. Deutsch did drop off of the meeting following the last item.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And so, um, bring that back and Ms. Grant?
The only thing, before your board gets too far into substance, since there was a hearing, a request for a continuance, and certainly the assessor's entitled to say it doesn't agree, but again, the decision is completely yours. The, um, the hearing date, the request to the continuance is because the owner agent indicates that they're unable to attend on the date specified. So if your board finds that that's good cause to continue, you can certainly do so. If it falls afoul of the, the two-year timeframe or another deadline, then the Assessors' Office would have to speak to that. But it's up to you whether you wish to continue it to a date certain or if you wish to move forward. But again, the basis for the continuance is, is not because the, um, property owner just didn't show up, it's they state they're unable to attend.
Okay, well, um, anything else to add, Dave, on that or, or Rich?
Um, no, that's, that's, it's at the Board's discretion. You can, you can approve it for, to the later date, and we can go and we'll probably put the, the 21 with that appeal also, because that will be up. So we would be hearing the, the 2021 also. At that time, they, they do appeal every year.
Okay. I'm, uh, I know it's in my district, uh, I'm, I'm fine with that. If they want to, if they want to, you know, push it out, I, I'm okay with that, since it's a, uh, it was listed that they couldn't make it and they would like to be able to make it, I'm okay with that. But I don't know how the rest of the Board feels, and if there's action to be taken, someone can make a motion and we'll go from there. There's not any other comments on it?
I'm, I'm looking at the- I have a question, uh, for Mr. Schwanger. Uh, I appreciate that you kinda gave us the history that it was evaluate or appraised originally upon the, the last purchase and that it's been growing incrementally based on statutory law. Um, is there ever, um, is there ever a, i- is there something within the code that allows them for saying that the value has decreased, that something has occurred that decreases the value? I know we've done that for fires, for example.
Oh, no, the, the profit, you can always say, so when they passed Prop 13 in 1978, they never put in the fact that there might be a recession. So shortly in the 80s, we had a major recession. All these properties went below their base your value. The market value was less. So they made a law that says if, if you can determine the market value is less than the base your value, then they get the market value, absolutely.
Okay. And, and maybe that's a request, is bring evidence of market value rather than just a, an appeal form, because it sounds to me like we don't have that evidence.
Correct. Yeah, we just have the appeal. We, we have no appraisal, no valuation information from them, just that it should have been valued as a springtime open, um, resort instead of a year rounds.
All right, thank you for that. Um, Rich, if you'd like to?
I just want to chime in to just one of the statements that Bruno said. Um, with our Office for Appeals and pretty much anything you have a question with, if you bring us information that we can use, if you bring us quantitative information that will help us understand why it should be valued higher or lower, needs to be on a prop rate or, or otherwise, we always accept it. Um, it, but it needs to be something that we can basically use. So kind of very similar to what you just said, I just want to make sure that's very clear. Thanks.
Thanks. So I think, uh, if there's, uh, action.
I guess my, my only comment obviously is, well, this is a, a, you know, a very large property. I think we all know where it is on the, we do know that it is not seasonal. It's, it's year-round. Um, you know, they're constantly being used or folks are there. So for me today, uh, you know, if a motion is made, I'm probably, uh, I, I, I don't agree with the extension of the, uh, of the appellant, so, or to continue it. Very important issue, I think, uh, they should be here, so. I don't have a reason why they can't make it, I don't know, but.
So I make a motion to, um, continue the following assessment appeal applications, number 68-2022, Worldmark to the May 2nd, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting, with the anticipation of receiving market value information for that, uh, meeting, so we can have a good substantial conversation.
I don't, I, I don't know if, I think I can second, can I, or I'll second?
Can pass the gavel or?
Yeah, I'll pass the gavel to the chair, the virtual chair, uh, vice chair. So I'll second that motion.
So Commissioner Simon?
No.
Commissioner Sabatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
And Commissioner Pyska?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, and I'll accept the, uh, the gavel back from that, uh, item and move on to 8.3. Uh, consideration of withdraw on the following assessment appeal applications, A, number 5-2021, Charles E. Billig, TRS, and B, number 621, 2021, Lake Shore Drive LLC, and 92021, Tran- Transform SR Holding Management LLC, and D, number 1-2021, 03-2021, Geysers Power Company LLC. Um, and Dave?
Yeah, no, we, we, these are all withdrawals. Most of these were protective appeals, um, protecting their rights, which is the standard. So they went over their information, were fine with the values sent in to Johanna, the withdrawal forms, and they're concluded just with the Board's blessing.
All right. Any discussion on these? All right. There's, uh, any action to be taken? All right.
One at a time, I take it?
No, most of these don't actually even need your approval, but you can certainly do it, um-
As a group?
As a group, just all of those individual properties listed under 8.3 of the Board's agenda this date, um, your board accepts the withdrawals.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sabatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Pyska?
Yes.
And Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. 8.4, consideration to deny the following assessment appeal applications on timeliness as no request for hearing received. A, number 02-2021, Norman Winters, trustee, and B, number 82021, Patricia Gage. Uh, Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, so they, they didn't respond that they would be hearing, so we didn't prepare for them. Um, I did speak with Mr. Winters at the time when he filed his assessment appeal. Um, he bought the property from his neighbor and felt we should enroll in the sales price. It's a half, 0.47 acres on the lake. Um, the other one, we used, uh, 25,000 for the value, uh, based on another lake. The other one, Patricia Gage, she said she would not be appearing today, uh, but she had an issue that we are addressing for her with a, a tree damage to her house. So, um, we would ask these be denied since they, we were not prepared for these, and they didn't respond to the Board, Johanna, that they would be appearing.
All right, any questions on this? Ms. Grant?
Your board may wish to inquire just to ensure that none of the property owners for any of the properties listed are present today?
Yes, and so is there anyone online or in the chambers that's present on either one of these, uh, properties? I don't see any hands up either, so I'll bring it back to the Board.
And in, in this case, Mr. Chair, you will have to take them both separately.
Okay. On the matter of A?
On the matter of A, Mr. Chair, I move to deny number, appeal number, assessment appeal number 02-2021, Norman Winters, trustee.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. Uh, Johanna, roll call, please.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sabatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Pyska?
Yes.
And Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
And number two, I move to deny the assessment appeal application number 08-2021, Patricia Gage.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Johanna, roll call, please.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sabatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Pyska?
Yes.
And Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, with that, uh, we will now move on to our 8.5, consideration of stipulation on the following assessment appeal application- Consideration of Stipulation on the Following Assessment Appeal Applications, number 07-2021, Bach Tiara, Deborah Ann TE, and Carl Eric TE. Dave?
Yes, we worked with the applicant's agent, we came to a resolution on this. We agree that that's market value if they were willing to sell it at this time. And we ask that the board accept a stipulation for their temporary reduction in value.
All right, thank you on that, any questions? All right. And there an action for accepting the stipulation?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to accept the stipulation of the following Assessment Appeal Application number 07-2021, Bach Tiara, Deborah Ann, and Carl Eric.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, Johanna, roll call, please.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sabatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Pisca?
Yes.
And Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, and that concludes the the Assessment Appeal Hearings. Mr. Schwanger and Assessor Ford, thank you very much for presentation and getting through these, and the work you've conducted on these as well.
Great, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your time this morning.
All right. With that, we will move back to our timed items, which was 10:30 a.m. Item 6.5, Public Hearing, Consideration of Proposed Rezone, RZ 22-02, and Negative Declaration, IS 22-19, applicant Daniel Sosa, project location 3774 and 3794, East Highway 20, Nice. With that, our Community Development Director, Maria Turner, will, and it looks like Mr. Porter, Eric Porter, Associate Planner, will present this item.
I'll just go ahead and pass it over to Associate Planner Porter for the presentation.
Thank you, good morning, supervisors. This is a continued item, there was a bit of a cleanup needed on the ordinance. And so we're back before you for consideration of a rezone. Properties located at 3774 East Highway 20 and 3794 East Highway 20. Current zoning is CHDR. What's being proposed, you can go to the next slide, Mira. What's being proposed is to rezone it to C2. The purpose for the rezone would be to enable cannabis sales, which are not allowed in the CH zone. So no general plan amendment is required. And just a point of interest, I checked the codes. There is a maximum of four general plan amendments that the county allows in a calendar year. There is no maximum on rezones, and no general plan amendments required on this one. So to get back to the details of the project, site is consists of two lots, a total 0.64 acres. Currently holds the Nice Cafe and Market. And again, they want to convert it to a retail cannabis facility, which is not allowed under the CH zoning. The overall area, and this is relevant, this project does not represent spot zoning, and the reason for that is because the area to the east and southeast is already Zone C2. So it effectively changed these two lots into C2 zoning. Some of the neighbors in the R1 district have expressed concern, and I believe the letters of concern are in your packets under Exhibit 5D, I believe. We evaluated the general plan, it's not changing, so it's not really that relevant. So it's currently community commercial, which is typical for C2, but not necessarily typical for CH. However, this particular two properties are already designated as community commercial in the general plan, therefore, no general plan amendments required. There are a few policies that relate to economic strengthening, and this is one of them, to promote development of diversified economic base by continuing to promote commerce. And I indicated that there will be up to six employees, is my understanding, once this zone change has occurred, and the retail cannabis use is up and running. Subject sites within the Upper Lake Nice urban plan's boundary, so it's held to the Upper Lake Nice area plan, which is silent on rezoning, so there is no conflict, there was just nothing directly related to this proposal. Use is allowed, I indicated that cannabis is an outright use in the C2 zone, but it is not in the CH zone under the current zoning. Continued Article 47 lists general processes that are required for a rezone. It can be done by the board, subject to the Planning Commission's recommendation. We did do an initial study, but there's no development proposed. The initial study resulted in a negative declaration with no mitigation measures. Planning Commission held a hearing on July 14th and voted 5-0 to recommend approval of the rezone to the board. Again, this had come before the board, I want to say in August, I don't remember the date. And we needed to amend the ordinance, which has been corrected. So our recommendation is that the board adopt Negative Declaration, IS 22-19, and to approve rezone, RZ 2202. And that concludes my presentation, unless there are any questions.
Any questions, I do have one. Did they, was there any notification about bus stop nearby from the local schools? Was there any discussion about that?
I don't think, I don't think it ever came up. The use itself was never in question, it was more a matter of, is this the right thing to do? And so we didn't look at an extensive list of what uses could be allowed. The only reason the cannabis is listed on there is simply because the applicant told us that was his intent.
Right, and if approved, he can conduct the cannabis dispensary without permit or anything of that nature?
Well, if that's the case. If he doesn't...
Don't use permit, but yeah, you still need a license.
Yeah, license.
Yeah, he's got to go through the state licensing.
Right, okay. Just that was just one of my questions, I don't know if there's any others. Hey, Rich Sabatier?
So this one's tough, because the conversation is supposed to be narrow and not broad, but at the same time, there's already a suggestion of what the end result will be, based on the actions that we take. And a lot of the public comments are related to what is proposed, but yet that's not what we're discussing today. And I know that when looking at the code, there's a huge gap between what a C1 does for dispensary and what a C2 does. One is a major use permit, and one is just an allowable use. That, I just have to express that, that's very confusing to me, as to why one does not have to go through the same level of scrutiny, and public comment, and things like that, and one just has to go through the litany of things that you have to go through. I don't think it's something that can change today, but it's just something that I it, it doesn't make sense to me, that the same type of thing can have so many, such a huge difference in the process to get to the same place, depending on C1 and C2. And I don't know how to handle this one, other than saying that what used to be there, I believe it's a post office that used to be there?
In front, right now, it's Nice Market, which is like a convenience store, and then behind it used to be the Evening Rose, which was a restaurant, it became Gordo's Tacos, and then it went folded under, hasn't been anything since.
Yeah, gotcha, I thought I saw U.S. Post Office when I did Google Streets or something like that. So that's long before that. And those uses are very much community uses, versus a dispensary is much more refined to a specific group of people that are interested in it, like something similar to a bar, rather than for everyone to have access to that, so. It is right next to a C2, both across the street and to the side. But this one troubles me, and I had to express the difference between the C1 and the C2, because I'd like to see a little bit more commonality of what kind of scrutiny the process is for these things to occur in a neighborhood. I think it would be wise for us to look at ensuring that we have public comment, but the way it is, as it is, that does not occur. So, and I can't continue to speak on it, because it's about the rezone, not the proposed project, so. I'll leave it at that.
All right. Is there any comments from any of the board supervisors, any others? Open it up to public input, if there's anyone in the chambers that would like to speak on this? Are you here for this item, man?
Well, we're the owners of the lot.
Would you like to state anything on behalf of this? If you could come to the microphone, and please state your name for the record.
My name is Mary Ann Alexander, and my husband Rocky and I have owned that since 1976. And the people that are in it now, as the convenience store, they, they're ready to leave. So it's not like it's going to be a store anymore. When we had it, it was a grocery store with meat, produce. You know, you could fix a whole dinner. Now it's just, you know, a bag of chips, or there's no soda in there anymore, she sells beer. I mean, they're really nice people, but they just don't have a business anymore.
Can I, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm there quite frequently, there is soda in there, there's groceries in there.
Yes.
And also, they, I, from what I understand, they haven't, they've asked, they said they've asked the owners, who is basically you, if what's happening, and you've told them that you don't know?
Well, no, we discussed that it was going to be a dispensary. She was the one that told me before I knew. Apparently, letters were sent out to residents, you know, to let them know what was going in there, and one of them brought it in and showed Bu Pender.
And they asked me as well, and I didn't, at the time, I didn't know, this is about three or four months ago?
Yeah.
And more, and?
Well, she asked me, and I says, well, I have not heard that, I did not know that.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know the man that's buying the property, or had looked at it.
Okay.
We've never met.
And so, because from what I understand, they don't plan on leaving, but that's just neither here nor there, because they're tenants, basically.
Well, what she said, I talked to her last week, and told her that there was a meeting coming up, and she says, well, we'll keep our fingers crossed, or something like that, and then she got to talking about the things that are coming into the store. They cannot get deliveries anymore, because the, like, the grocery people, the Pepsi, you know, all those have put limits on how much you have to order. So they can't get that stuff delivered to them now, they go to stores and buy it and bring it in.
Okay.
So it's been very hard on them, because they can't meet the criteria that all these companies want now.
Okay, thank you for that, sure wish they were here to elaborate, but they're not, so. That's all the questions I had, so if you had anything else to add, did you have questions, Supervisor Sabatier, or? Go ahead.
Yeah, I do have a question, you said you've never met Mr. Sosa, I just want to make sure, because he's the applicant rezoning. You've had communication with Mr. Sosa?
No, no, I've never talked to him. I just go through our real estate person.
Okay, so they're going through a mutual third party, because I'm kind of concerned that someone else is trying to rezone your property, and you've never met this person, I just want to make sure that there's at least some connection.
No, and I knew our realtor, which is Cassie Pivoniska, she, she had told us that they would have to rezone, and that it would be a long process, and but that, you know, we've just talked to her. We have not met the man.
Within our application in the project file, we do have an authorization letter for a zone change application, signed by Mary Ann Alexander, secretary.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay. If there's nothing else to add?
No, that's, that's all.
Okay, thank you. And I'll look online and see if there's any other comments. I'm not seeing any hands up. All right, so I'll close public input at this time, since there's no other hands up online, bring it back to the board. And is there anything else to add, that you wanted to add, Eric or Maria?
Wait for questions, thank you.
I don't necessarily have questions, they're more statements. I know that some of the folks have reached out to me, couldn't be here today either, and mentioned that, and I know some of this, I'm going to walk a very fine line, because it's an, it's activity in the neighborhood that's more of the concern of some of the public. In that area, there is a neighborhood watch, and they've already accentuated that there's issues in that neighborhood with this. They feel like it would exacerbate those issues, especially in regard to sales of another substance, which is more illegal than the one that we're dealing with. However, my other issue with this, and I don't want to sound discriminatory, is I know that the person that is applying for this has been, has worked in Double Eagle Ranch with other, with other people, and has had many issues with that community. And I won't go into detail with that, so for me, I will I'll use a familiar situation to use an analogy, and that is the Dollar General, where we had two in the district, and they were trying to apply for more. We do have a dispensary in Las Erne, I feel like this is another one that would be really close in proximity to it, I know it's a, it's a right for people to do these things, I just have an issue not only with the fact that there will be another one specifically down the road, and I know that the applicant will pursue this, and I just I don't feel comfortable with the relationship that the applicant has with community members in previous situations, so it's really hard for me to trust this individual when it comes to this type of thing, so that's all I'll say on that. Supervisor Sabatier?
Question for Director Turner. I know that you have the task force that's ongoing and having conversations. Is there a plan to review, I know we're, we kind of tasked you with the cannabis ordinance, but does that include dispensaries in the review of that ordinance?
Yes, the review, the cannabis task force will review all aspects of the cannabis policy that is existing, including land use, which is where the use by right versus conditional use permit requirement comes in, so that will all be examined considered.
Because I think that there's some that have opened up, some that are still in the works, even though they've been approved to open up soon, and I think that we need to look at what we've learned, and see if there's any changes. But again, I'm getting in the weeds of the specifics of the project, rather than the rezone. Last question for you, just and it sounds like spot zoning, but what is the difference, the true difference between a C2 and a C1?
C1 is more of a local commercial, it's a neighborhood-based type of commercial, so it's servicing just locals, like a smaller radius. This is actually zone highway commercial, and so it is, it's designed to meet the needs of our traveling public. It's different than community commercial, which is C2, which services a larger, it's not just your local neighborhood, but they're anticipating a large amount of traffic in and out, so your typical retails are going to be, let's see, in highway commercial, I mean, I'll go back to C2 in just a moment, but in highway commercial, if this was to stay highway commercial, it would be available for use by right, with restaurants, coffee shops, delis, drive-throughs, outdoor dining areas, real estate offices, and some other, other highway commercial uses with similar character to those that are listed above. So it's not just limited to neighborhood markets. It would have other options. Then, let me go over to C1. Or C2. In C2, that's where we start getting into retail sales of food, applying... In C2, that's where we start getting into retail sales of food appliances. So these are our larger food stores. We've had barber and beauty shops, professional offices, professional services, anticipating that it's going to serve not just the neighborhood surrounding it, but also other, other people coming in. We can do shoe repair, jewelry repair, restaurants, cafes, delis, professional offices. So here's where you can get your, your surveyors, your copiers, things like that. You know, small animal veterinary clinics, doctor's offices, things like that would be appropriate in C2. Typically, well, this, this parcel would not represent spot zoning because it is adjacent to C2. So it would not be creating the land use conflicts necessarily because it's, it's surrounded by, it would be surrounded by the similar uses, or to the west it would be. So we avoid spot zoning, which is where you create an island of zoning surrounded by a different zone structure because of the anticipated land use conflicts. So we did not see that here. Again, when we're considering a rezone project, we're considering all possible uses for that proposed zoning district rather than strictly limiting it to what the applicant says they may or may not, you know, what they might plan to do there. So retail cannabis, yes, would be a use by right, meaning that their use would not require a conditional permit. However, should they decide to make significant alterations to the facade or enlarge their footprint, then that would likely trigger a design review or development review permit. That is conditional. So, so we're, as planners, we're looking at all possible uses that would be contained within the proposed zoning change. I hope I answered your question somewhere in there.
And just want to make sure and clarify that I, I didn't see what you're offering as a spot zone. My question about C1 feels like that would be a spot zone since it is not surrounded by C1 at all.
To go from highway commercial to C1 would, yes, be a spot zoning.
Yeah.
We would avoid that.
And my, my, my struggles with this is the way that the shape of the property is, the fact that it's two properties rather than just one. One of them seems to be facing the community more so than the highway, and one is definitely on the highway, but there, like, that's, that's where it becomes a little awkward. Yeah.
And I'll just state that I do appreciate the recommendation from the, from staff, and I have no way trying to second guess what, what has been recommended. I just have, I have experience with the community and experience with situations involving some folks involved, and so for me, I have a very hard time, you know, with that. So I'll just state that one last time and go from there. And if there's, I know it's in my district, if someone would like to go forward from there.
Where, did you have public comment?
Yes, yes.
Is it all right? So I just want to clarify, there's three motions that will be needed here, or? Negative declaration, then the...
First is the SEQA for the negative declaration, and then the rezone itself. Since it includes an ordinance, has multiple motions for that ordinance.
Okay, I want to just make sure I get them. I'll try something. I moved it, Ms. Chair, I moved that the Board of Supervisors find the rezone applied for, for Daniel Sosa and property located at 3774 and 3794 East Highway 20 East, California, further described as APN 032-181-02 and 03, will not have a significant environmental impact and that the board adopts a negative declaration based on the findings set forth in the memorandum dated October 18, 2022.
Is there a second?
Can I ask for a two-minute break?
Is the board okay with that?
Yeah, I guess we can do it in the middle of a motion. I would look for a, yeah.
I don't see a second, so I'm thinking that...
Hold the motion.
Let's, yeah, let's hold the motion and then have a really quick two-minute break and come back.
And I apologize for that.
No worries. All right. All right. Welcome back from our break. We were in the middle of a motion made by Supervisor Simon, and so just wanted to call one more time if there was a second, and if not, the motion dies. Supervisor Sabatier?
So, Mr. Chair, I would like to make an alternate motion or a second motion to, due to the location and due to the potential of what C2 opens up for new type of businesses at that location, I feel that I am going to put a motion to deny or to, how do I, to not approve the negative declaration IS 22-19 due to the potential impacts to the general area of that property.
Ms. Grant?
A motion was made to approve the negative declaration based upon no significant impacts. It died for a lack of a second.
Right.
So now what you're asking for is to make an affirmative motion?
Yes. No, not, not an affirmative motion.
But to deny?
To deny.
But to deny the fact that a negative declaration is appropriate?
I am not approving, I do not want to approve the negative declaration that is in front of us, so I am denying the negative declaration.
As being insufficient, because that's your, okay, that's what I was trying to get to.
I, I apologize. I knew my wording wasn't correct. I, I looked your way. Thank you for the assistance.
All right. Is there a second? I will pass the gavel to Vice Chair Pyska and second that motion.
Okay, so you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Supervisor Simon?
No.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska? Thank you.
And at this point, we don't need to approve any of the following?
No. All right. So with that, that closes this item, and the motion passes. With that, we'll move on to our next item, which is a 6.6, which is our 1130 public hearing, consideration of ordinance rescinding specific sections of Lake County zoning ordinance relating to early activation. And Maria Turner?
Hello again. Maria Turner, Director of Community Development. This past summer, in July, the board adopted an urgency ordinance establishing a moratorium on the issuance of early activation of use permits. Simultaneously, it approved a resolution of intent to amend the zoning code regarding the rescission or the removal of the early activation of use permits from the Lake County Code. Part of that resolution of intent was a request for, or direction to community development to take the concept, the proposed ordinance to rescind early activation of use permits to both the cannabis task force and the planning commission. Beginning of August, it went to the task force, which supported a recommendation to remove early activation of use from the zoning ordinance. Later that month, it went to the planning commission, which affirmed that same recommendation. When it came to your board at the end of August, the wording in the agenda was more of a notification rather than allowing the board to take action at that time. So since then to now, this has, this draft ordinance has been properly noticed and is now coming before you in a public hearing so that action can be taken by your board. And this ordinance, just to be super clear, would remove early activation of use from a couple of different spots in the zoning ordinance, so it would no longer be an option.
Supervisor Sabatier?
You stated a couple of different spots. I thought it was only the application types within the commercial cannabis, that it would take away the potential of early activation. That's, that's, I believe, the only, unless I, I missed it. Because I'm looking at the ordinance here, and it says Section 1, and it just says Sections 21-27.4 and, oh, and Section 21-27.13.
Yes, it is currently available for both zoning permit and use permit levels. This will remove it from both.
So this removes early activation altogether?
Correct.
Thank you. Apologize for only catching the latter one.
Any other comments? Supervisor Pyska? Any comments? Okay. Open it up for the public on this item. Not seeing anyone in the chambers with their hands up, so I'll see a hand up in Zoom, Brett's Moto G Power. I see your hand up. Do you have a comment on this item on the agenda?
No comment.
Okay.
Uh...
Your hand's up, so I didn't, press star six, it'll probably take it down, so.
Oh.
All right. There you go.
Apologize.
No worries. And so with that, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Supervisor Sabatier?
And I apologize for having this question because I missed the fact that this was entirely the, getting rid of the early activation. That existed prior to cannabis. Was it used for other projects or for other things prior to cannabis?
Yes. It was used in mostly commercial permits. Say you are getting a use permit in a building to change the use of the, the building. I remember there, there were early activation, use, early activation of use permits that were issued where we went through the environmental kind of checklist criteria to make sure there were not going to be any environmental impacts. And so they have been issued, they're rare, but they have been issued.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
We're ready for a motion? Ms. Chair, I move to approve a first reading of the draft ordinance and read in title only and advance the ordinance to the next meeting date.
I, I...
One second.
I'm sorry, it's two motions. You, you've got it right, it just can't be combined. The first one is to have the ordinance wave reading, read in title only, and then a motion to advance.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
The motions to wave reading and have, oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, we haven't gotten there yet. Excuse me.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
And then the title is Board of Supervisors, Lake County, State of California, an ordinance rescinding specified sections of the Lake County zoning ordinance relating to early activation.
And then the motion to advance.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to advance the ordinance to the next meeting date, which is...
Twenty-fifth.
October 25th.
October 25th. Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Conduct the roll call, please, Johanna.
Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. And motion carries. And so, thank you again, Director Turner. Our next timed item is at 1:00 PM, so we'll go ahead and cover some of the non-timed items, or do we have, yeah?
You might, you might want to try if Mr. French is on Zoom, 5.18 IT Zoom item.
I do not see him.
And if not, you may wish to go to the 7.2 or 7.3 or 7.7.
Supervisor Sabatier, what's your...
I just, I don't know that, my opinion, that Mr. French is not needed. It was a missing attachment that was not attached to the agenda. I wanted to make sure that that was shared, very similar to 5.28, that it was shared rather than just approving what was written on the memo, that we have the document of evidence of what it is that exactly that we are approving. I don't know if it's been added to the...
5.18, right? I see renewal, and then I see another renewal.
And so, yes, so those attachments have been added to the agenda, and just wondering if maybe Johanna can share the screen, that way make sure that everybody sees it, and then we should be able to move forward. Again, my, my opinion, I think this is simple. I just wanted to make sure the information was available.
Well, now that she's shared the screen, I guess we'll go ahead and do that one. 5.18, waive formal bidding requirement pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.1, as it is an extension of an annual agreement and county purchasing agent has determined such action to be a cost advantage and in the best interest of the county, and be authorized the IT director to issue a purchase order to Zoom Video Communications, Inc., for Zoom video conferencing licenses in the amount of $27,581.96. And so Johanna has the invoice up. Are there any other questions on this or comments? Not hearing any. I'll open it up to the public. And I don't see any hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding requirement pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.1, as it is an extension of an annual agreement, and the county purchasing agent has determined such action to be a cost advantage and in the best interest of the county, and authorized the IT director to issue a purchase order to Zoom Video Communications, Inc., for Zoom video conferencing licenses in the amount of $27,581.96.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Please conduct the roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll move on to item 7.7. I just wanted to, I know this is involving Lucerne Area Town Hall. Wanted to continue this item as they meet this Thursday, and one of the topics of discussion is filling the, the open position, so I'd just like to give them that opportunity to discuss that at that meeting and move forward on Tuesday from there. So if that's okay, I don't know if we have to take action or if we just need to push it forward.
Just consensus is fine.
There's a consensus on that?
Yes, for me.
Okay. So with that, we'll, we'll deal with that next week. Let's see. 7.2, consideration of an advocacy letter requesting urgent state action in support of Lake County's tree mortality emergency. And I see Jessica Pyska, you're on, and I know this is one of the items you've been working on along with staff, of course.
Yeah, this is a follow-up from our meeting a few weeks ago at the request of Supervisor, I'm sorry, Senator McGuire, to pull this information together so that we can get support from RCRC and CSAC and his office as well as our Assembly Member, Aggie Arcory.
All right. Any questions from the board?
No, completely supported.
All right. Open it up to the public for any comment. Not seeing any hands up. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Oops.
I think she's ready for motion.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve that advocacy letter and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please conduct the roll call, Johanna.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Item 7.3, consideration of county representation for October 27 meeting with CPUC Commissioner Darcy Hawke and Rural County Representative of California, RCRC, discussion to gather board member and public input in preparation for this meeting. C.A.O. Parker, I see you're on this, but I also see Matthew Rothstein, the Deputy County Administrative Officer here, so I'm pretty sure you're going to hand it over to him anyhow.
Good morning, Board, and thank, my name is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. So as you're aware from the memo, on Thursday morning, October 27, Commissioner Darcy Hawke of the California Public Utilities Commission has agreed to meet with a small delegation from the County of Lake and representatives from RCRC to better understand the unique changes. of the California Public Utilities Commission has agreed to meet with a small delegation from the County of Lake and representatives from RCRC to better understand the unique challenges facing our county that intersect the work of the CPUC. And you're probably also aware this meeting flows in part from recent discussions surrounding PG&E's vegetation management program and wood hauling program and practices. And given her central role in that ongoing conversation, Supervisor Pyska has already agreed to attend this meeting as one representative of your board. However, we wanted to bring this item forward today, uh, as I'm aware, we're all aware that your, um, each of you have issues that intersect both CPUC and PG&E responsibilities, for example, in your own districts, and wanted to ensure that you had the opportunity to, um, both weigh in on a potential second Board of Supervisors representative for this meeting and also provide any input that you had in terms of topic areas you feel should be focused on, whether you are the assigned representative or not, meeting. Uh, so potential topics include the following, and not limited to, wood haul vegetation management, PG&E system capacity issues. We've been hearing, uh, so, in some other counties, there have been instances where PG&E was unable to provide electrical service to new businesses or housing projects, for example. PG&E's fast trip, um, or enhanced power line safety settings program where uh, power is automatically shut off in response to hazards such as a tree falling on a power, on a power line. And also, the CPUC does have responsibilities related to broadband. Uh, as your board is aware, uh, we'll soon be developing an implementation plan for our, um, broadband plan uh, in consultation with a consultant. And, uh, it, it seems prudent to ask the commissioner potentially what pitfalls others have experienced in similar efforts. Uh, but, uh, now with that introduction, I'm very interested to hear your, your discussion and potential additional topics and consideration of a potential second, uh, representative for that meeting.
All right. Supervisor Pyska, did you have anything to add to that?
Um, yeah, so last week, we had a meet, an RCRC coordinated meeting with twelve counties talking about these issues. I know this, um, same commissioner is headed up to Humboldt, I think, next week to, um, to meet specifically about, uh, the PG&E issues with vegetation management as well as, um, the, the outages. So I, I think that's primarily where the conversation's going to be. I know Supervisor Simon joined me in a, on a call with, um, Senator McGuire last week, and Supervisor Crandall joined, um, with a different RCRC call, uh, later in the afternoon on Friday. Um, kind of touching on a lot of those topics, or both of those topics.
And so, uh, potential topics, it could include more items to discuss, like, for example, in regard to PG&E and CPUC, uh, I hate to go all the way in left field, but, uh, Lake Pillsbury Scott Dam, would that be something I could potentially, if, if chosen to alternate and help, would that be something to discuss, or?
I think so. I, I think if that's, I, I think that's an important thing to bring up, and if you want to be a part, if, you know, I would recommend that you be the second supervisor then.
I'm good with that. Yeah, all right. Yeah, I would love to discuss that and also support on the current issues at hand that are brought up, especially with broadband. I know that we've been working very hard on trying to get that, uh, some of the funding and, uh, some of that work done in our county, so I'd be glad to be there. And not to mention, uh, representing RCRC as well, so.
Yes, and Supervisor Simon, your issues with your, the transmission lines, if you want to pass those to us, and we'd be happy to bring those up.
Yeah, I think they're obviously well aware of it, but absolutely, I'll get those numbers for you, and it's the same conversation I have with PG&E all the time. So, yes, I, I will get that information, uh, through Matthew.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, no, I agree that the, uh, Lake Pillsbury, to me, it kind of fits within the system capacity issues. Uh, if it goes away, that is now some megawatts that they will no longer be able to produce. Granted, they're fixing their, uh, generators there as we speak, but, uh, I think that's a good place to have that conversation. Um, appreciate that all the others are on there, uh, as identified topics to speak about, but there is one that I feel that CPUC has been absolutely lacking in bringing into the twenty first century and creating a little bit more local control, and that's to request a change to Rule twenty A. Uh, the undergrounding of wires is now in the hands of PG&E and not the local communities, and I think we both need to be working on undergrounding, and they're not changing the rules on how that money is collected uh, and how that money is spent. Right now, it's still identified as a beautification process. I would love to see it being more of a fire suppression process as well as beautification to allow us a little bit more, uh, flexibility on how to use those funds. Uh, so I think that's an important topic for, for me. Uh, I don't know if that's important for the board, but just wanted to mention Rule twenty A.
I'd be glad to discuss that as well. All right, so is there any other comments from the board? Open it up for public input. Is there anybody from the public that would like to discuss this item? And I'm not seeing any hands up in Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for, I think we have, I think it is, uh, action.
So we're just making an action on this second, or should we do an action on both supervisors representing?
Or, does a consensus work, Anita?
I think in this case, you should just confirm by motion who the supervisors are going to be.
So I move to approve, uh, super, our Vice Chair Pyska and Chair Crandall as our supervisor representatives in a discussion with CPUC regarding PG&E topics as discussed.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Uh, Johanna, please conduct roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Uh, thank you, Matthew, and, uh, Supervisor Pyska as well on that one, and, and of course, CAO Parker.
Thank you, Matthew.
And let's see here.
I don't know how long, uh, five point one one will be. Um, but if it's gonna be an extended time, maybe you want to do calendars or just convene for?
You got the last board appointment, seven point seven.
I wanted to continue that one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Maybe we do do calendars then. We'll conduct calendars, so, uh, Supervisor... Simon, looks like you're ready.
Yeah, all right. Uh, board meeting finishing up today. Won't have anything on the calendar for tomorrow, but on Thursday, I do have a couple of meetings. I did have on here Grants Best Fits meeting, but also have the, I think, EMCC bi-monthly meeting. I think I'm on there now. Did we make a change on that? I think I am. So I have that, uh,
On Thursday?
October twentieth, ten thirty to twelve. And then, um, a little confusion, uh, is the Disaster Council meeting this Thursday, Jessica? I thought it was last week, so I had the wrong date. So there's a Disaster Council meeting, uh, this Thursday, uh, three PM. So I had it messed up on my calendar. And then, um, Friday morning, have the meeting with the, uh, with CAO. And then, um, moving right into the weekend, and then back here on, uh, Tuesday, uh, for the board meeting. We did have the Risk Reduction Authority meeting, uh, yesterday. We have done some format changes. Um, you know, I think the first time we've gotten done in about an hour and a half, uh, yesterday, so we're gonna continue that to try and move forward. Uh, what we've done is kind of restructured through CMAT process where we have a different reporting opportunities for folks, and then also tying into the Lake County Fire Safe Council, um, you know, for some other reporting opportunities. So I think, uh, we're in a transition as we're moving forward, but, um, those are things we've done. We've also scheduled a director's, uh, budget conversation that's gonna be coming up on November fourth to really look at priorities for this year. That was asked from some of the, uh, directors, and we're gonna go ahead and take care of that. We have that scheduled for November fourth, so. Also during the, uh, time off, I attended multiple meetings, uh, with Supervisor Pyska. I think one of the biggest ones was with PG&E last week, should, can report more, but, uh, as things are uh, just continuing down the road, I think this will be long-term continual conversations, whether it's undergrounding, uh, whether it's, uh, tree removal, all these other things that we're continuing to discuss and bring to the attention of PG&E to just try and get better at it, uh, to let them know our concerns of our constituents and continue to, continue to push, uh, hopefully on the behalf of our, uh, community and our county, uh, if they're gonna be working here to do it right. So we'll continue that, and obviously, we just set up another conversation that, uh, Pyska, uh, Supervisor Pyska and Chair Crandall are gonna handle, so that's all I have.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Okay, um, tomorrow I'm meeting with, uh, I believe it's CSAC. We've been talking about RCRC, so I got it confused. Um, trying to, uh, learn a lot more, and I'm also gonna be meeting with NACO staff, I just don't have an appointment quite yet, but, uh, about human services, um, entitlements, and just, I, I, I need to better understand how those things work and having our, also, a larger scale conversation about, um, legislation that impacts our jail, um, and our, um, jail medical specifically. And I'll, I'll bring more information about that as I move forward through this. Uh, then I meet with the Parks Group, uh, to, uh, review the, um, facilities that we've been talking about, both the Rec Center and the Aquatics Center. Um, then later on, I'm, uh, part of a committee for the City of Clear Lake to oversee the spending, um, expenditures of Measure V, uh, which is the road tax. I'll be joining that. Um, on Thursday, I have a Continuum of Care Executive Committee, uh, meeting. I have a intra-facility transfer meeting and an emergency medical center county committee. I, I'm not quite sure what the CC stands for, but the one that Supervisor Simon mentioned. Um, I will be also at that meeting. Um, later on in that evening, I'll be joining the City Council for their meeting, just to make sure I keep up on the changes and activities that they're up to. And on Friday, I have a meeting with Chief Sepeda in the morning and, um, and with, um, the, it's, it's our behavioral health staff, but it's the navigating, housing navigation meeting that occurs on Friday, uh, for the check-in. And then, coming back on Monday, I have a meeting with the, um, Economic Mobility Leadership Network from NACO, uh, get a presentation and a meeting. We are starting to prepare for our trip to Mobile, Alabama, uh, which I'm looking forward to. And then I have a meeting with, um, I believe I have something at the same time that I'm supposed to meet with my C, our CAO. Um, and it was for the Hope Rising Budget Committee, so I'm gonna see if we can change the time that we meet, because I want to make sure and get to that. Um, there's, uh, there's some good things, uh, that are occurring in the backend for Hope Rising. Uh, there needed to be some financial cleanup and, uh, creation of budgets and things like that, and I think that everything is slowly migrating towards, um, where everybody wants it to be and what everybody needs it to be. So, uh, happy to be a part of that, and I think that's all I have, and then back here again on the twenty fifth.
All right. Vice Chair Pyska?
So I was really busy the last two weeks. Um, unfortunately, the state has failed to respond to our tree mortality emergency. Um, we have not gotten a response one way or the other, and that is very disappointing. So I spent a lot of time, uh, making phone calls and having meetings and trying to ring every bell possible to get the attention and the assistance that we need. So, um, as Supervisor Simon mentioned, Senator McGuire set up a meeting with PG&E last Wednesday. Um, so we had regional and corporate, uh, PG&E members along with, um, Supervisor Simon, myself, and I, Senator McGuire, and Assembly Member Agar Curry. And we just talked through a lot of the issues that we're having locally, but for me, the three priorities that I continue to press hard on them is that we need the work to be done. And we, number two, we need the work to be cleaned up after, as, as they're doing their work. And number three is we need them to follow their best management practices and mitigation efforts. And those three things, um, kind of distill a combination of all the problems that we are having with them. So we'll continue to push hard. They heard us, our electeds heard us, um, so I continue to be in contact with them. I have invited PG&E, as I mentioned earlier, to the Cockberry Council meeting, which is this Thursday night, for the community to speak directly to PG&E about their concerns. Um, that was one of the things that I also brought up, is that they need to be responsive to the community and, um, accessible to the community, and, you know, that we're happy to elevate complaints, but they need to make themselves available and, and the community, uh, needs to be able to, to have better contact with them. So that was, um, last week, Wednesday, that was that meeting, um. And then on Friday, I had two separate meetings that RCRC set up. One was with a, um, as I mentioned earlier, with twelve counties that are, um, having difficulties with, um, the cleanup that PG&E is doing and some of the work that they're doing. So that again goes back to, you know, finishing the job and, um, making sure that their subcontractors are following their BMPs and all the mitigation efforts, so there needs to be some accountability there. Um, so this week, tomorrow, I have agenda review, Zone of Benefit meeting at the courthouse. With, then I'm, I'm part of this wildfire photo voice research group, which, um, spoke at the Risk Reduction Authority yesterday. So they're trying to work with different communities that have lived through wildfires, so doing that. Um, Thursday, we have the Best Fits Grant meeting. I have a tree mortality meeting with, um, Senator McGuire's office, and this is to follow up on the lack of response from the Governor's Office and Cal OES, um, to our emergency, which we declared in May. So, um, hopefully, hopefully we'll be seeing some action with that soon. The Disaster Council is at three o'clock, and then I will have the Cockberry Council at six thirty. Friday, um, we, we moved the Tree Mortality Task Force from the Risk Reduction Authority back to, um, the county because of the work that has to happen through public work. So that meeting, I'm not sure if that's gonna be a standing meeting at the nine o'clock time. Um, I'll be working with our CAO on setting up that resilience work. We have our monthly, or I'm sorry, our weekly staff meeting with Tree Mortality with Director De Leon. And then, um, I have another meeting at one o'clock with, um, Director Turner. And Monday is just my meeting with CAO Parker and then back on Tuesday.
All right. So, um, tomorrow morning I have agenda review, and then, um, I will have the, uh, aquatics meeting as well with, uh, with, with Lars Ewing. Um, in the evening, we'll have the Western Region Town Hall on Thursday, the twentieth. I'll have the Lucerne Area Town Hall. Friday, I'll be meeting with, uh, Community Development. Um, and then Monday, I'll have the Scots Valley Advisory Committee meeting, and then back here on Tuesday for a, um, for the Board of Supervisors meeting, so that conducts my calendar for the week, and, uh, yes.
I just have a question for CAO. Has there been any information at all from the Governor's Office about our vacant seat?
No.
Any update on that?
No, no notice.
I just heard Scots Valley, and I felt bad.
Yeah. All right. Well, with that, it looks like it's twelve oh five. We will come back at one oh five, uh, for our break from lunch and move on to our, uh, timed item for that, so we'll see you after lunch. Let's see, I think we're at our six point seven. Uh, welcome back from the lunch break. Uh, we are at, uh, consideration of retention of specialized legal services to address PG&E's wildfire mitigation activities, and, uh, uh, with that, I'm waiting for it to upload, but I know that, uh, this is County Council, Mrs. Grant?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, uh, the item before you today is a presentation by...
I don't think you're on the mic.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the item today is the consideration of retention of special... The item today is the consideration of retention of specialized legal services. Attorney Megan Samaji is here to make a presentation to your board. Ms. Samaji has just an incredible level of expertise in representing entities with regard to matters of concern involving both Pacific Gas and Electric Company and in front of the CPUC. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to her so that she can make her presentation to the board with regard to the type of legal services and work she can provide for the County of Lake.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, it's a pleasure to be here, I really appreciate the opportunity to come and present to your board. As Ms. Grant mentioned, I do have quite a bit of experience working with PG&E at the CPUC, particularly around wildfire-related issues on behalf of local governments, and I will share my presentation. There we go. So to start off with, just to give you an overview of why Lake County has reached out to me in particular on this matter, I have over 10 years' experience as a CPUC specialist attorney, 95% of all the work I do is in front of the California Public Utilities Commission, and of that, probably 75% deals with PG&E in some way or another. Since late 2018, I have represented the Joint Local Government Coalition. At its height, it was comprised of eight counties and three cities, primarily in PG&E service territory, but that also extended to Southern California Edison service territory, and the work that we did and continue to do focused on the utilities' public safety power shut-off practices. We started that work when the programs were in their infancy and it was an unmitigated disaster, and over the course of three-plus years, working directly with the CPUC and with the utilities, we managed to achieve a significant number of the local government's goals in terms of operational changes, communication, outreach, coordination, and getting the CPUC to establish a framework for the power shut-offs that was actually workable and reasonable. And we were also instrumental in the CPUC's proceeding that examined the 2019 power shut-offs and imposed $106 million penalty on PG&E for failing to conduct them in anything approaching a reasonable fashion. Also, in 2021, on behalf of the counties of Napa and Sonoma and the City of Santa Rosa, I worked along with the Rural County Representatives of California to get a CPUC order from the executive director that PG&E had to clean up all of the trees that it cut down when it did the post-lightning fire system restoration for the 2020 fires. That was an extended struggle, it took about a year with the CPUC and with PG&E, but we were ultimately successful. And through all this work, I have built a reputation as a credible advocate for local governments in particular, and we have reached the point where CPUC staff routinely reaches out on its own to ask for local government input on particular issues around resiliency and wildfires, and that is the expertise and the reputation that I would bring to bear on behalf of the county should you choose to go forward. And also, very importantly, I am intimately familiar with PG&E, with how it operates, with its accounting, and that is really important, because with PG&E, as I'm sure you know, everything at the end of the day always comes down to money. And so understanding where the money comes from, how PG&E tracks it, and whether its claims that it has exceeded its budget for a particular program are actually credible, that is very helpful in working directly with the utility and also with the regulatory And I think it helps, I think, to sort of talk about the legal framework and the regulatory framework in which PG&E's wildfire mitigation and its tree-cutting activities are happening in the framework that the county would be working within to try and get PG&E's activities under control, get them to clean up after themselves. A question that I get asked a lot is, does PG&E actually have the authority to do this? Can they just enter property, cut down whatever trees they want, and just leave them there? And at a high level, the answer is yes, and that's because this statute gives PG&E really broad authority to do whatever it deems necessary in terms of trimming trees, cutting down trees, removing them, and that's for line clearance issues, that's for hazard trees that could potentially fall into the line, essentially anything that PG&E thinks it needs to do to keep its system safe. And there is a caveat where PG&E is liable for tree work, for any damages from tree work that it does outside of its easements, so if it cuts down a tree and breaks a wall or a water line, or otherwise really damages property outside the easement, PG&E can be made to clean up after itself, but in terms of whether PG&E has the ability to do this work with such broad discretion, the answer is generally yes. And the question of how PG&E goes about deciding what trees to cut down and how that happens, this is the area where the huge disconnect that exists between PG&E's wildfire mitigation and tree removal programs, as they exist on paper, and how they are actually conducted in practice really shows up, and there's, in this area where, you know, the actual on-the-ground impacts and how it's going in real life, this work happens in a huge gray area where, you know, the CPUC has not dictated at a granular level how PG&E really needs to do this on a day-to-day basis, which means that a lot of the work gets left up to PG&E or its contractors, and so this is the area where there is both the greatest amount of frustration and bad behavior, but also the real opportunity to improve how PG&E is operating on a daily basis. And so the decision-making process for how these trees are identified and removed generally follows the same pattern, they have a number of inspections, there are pre-inspections, and then secondary inspections, and then quality control inspections, but PG&E has an army of inspectors, some of them are employed by the utility, some of them are third-party contractors, and they do have training and they do have criteria that they are supposed to adhere to when identifying drought-killed and beetle-killed trees, trees that are at a danger of falling into power lines, or where the limbs are, you know, looking like they're potentially able to break off or be harmed by high wind events. And those trees are, they're marked, you know, according in theory to the criteria and the training, and then PG&E sends their contract crews, none of whom are in-house, out into the field, they cut down the trees. For years now, we have been seeing with the annual regulatory troupes, and frankly, just what's happening on the ground, that there is a huge gulf between what the regulations and the protocols and the best practices say these people should be doing, and then what's actually happening, and this is where so much of the damage to property and the just legitimate frustration in our communities is being seen, because the PG&E does not have a handle on its quality control, and it doesn't really have a handle on its third-party contractors. And you also know from your firsthand experience and from your residents' experience that there is no meaningful real-time approval or appeal process for tree removal, you know, PG&E says a tree has to come down, there is not a meaningful avenue for a landowner to appeal that determination or get PG&E's crews to leave that tree in place while the dispute is being worked out. That is a real issue in practice, and there is potentially, you know, room in the regulatory process to improve that, but as you know, PG&E's driving force is really mitigating its own wildfire liability, and that tends to lead to decisions out in the field that are, you know, overbroad in terms of we're just going to cut down everything and we're not going to talk about it, and we're not going to negotiate anything, and this is just the way it has to be, and that is a difficult starting position for a landowner and for a community to have to negotiate against. And another aspect of PG&E's tree removal and wildfire mitigation activities that make it difficult to really make any real progress with the utility is it has multiple programs under which trees are cut down, and the utility can use those as a shell game for funding and authorization, and, you know, if, you know, someone goes to complain to PG&E about a tree because it wasn't anywhere near the power lines, and PG&E can say, well, we cut it down because, you know, it was impacted by the drought instead, so, you know, you're talking to us about the wrong thing. But there are four main programs under which PG&E cuts its trees down, they all have different regulatory authorization, and they all have different funding mechanisms, and understanding how the regulatory approval is set up, where the money comes from, and if there are truly any upper limits on how much money PG&E is authorized to spend, that having that understanding of what's really going on behind the scenes is critical to gaining any ground, both with the regulatory agency and with the utility itself. And so how then do we get to a place where we are improving PG&E's actual day-to-day on-the-ground operations? There are a couple of different avenues at a very high level. There's direct advocacy to the CPUC decision-makers, so the commissioners, the commission's executive director, the Safety and Enforcement Division, because PG&E's practice of leaving tens of thousands of felled trees on the ground to just dry out and become kindling is a serious wildfire safety issue, as well as just a safety issue for people who are trying to navigate their own property safely. There's also a possibility for direct advocacy to the Office of Energy Infrastructure Safety, which is the agency that oversees PG&E's wildfire mitigation plan, and what that direct advocacy looks like is requesting meetings, face-to-face Zoom meetings, to talk about the actual conditions in the field, because the regulators tend primarily to be aware of the rosy picture that PG&E paints in its reports and in its plans, which look very reasonable on paper and have all of the protocols all spelled out and all of the explanations of the, you know, rigorous training program that their people are going to be going through. And so it is really a key part of the process of improving what's actually happening in real life, to educate the regulators as to what's really happening, that's stories from your constituents, that is photographs, field tours in some cases can be arranged and can be very effective. And under the direct advocacy approach, in a perfect world, the outcome would be that we would get an order from the CPUC on its own volition that PG&E needs to actually clean up after itself and to institute whatever operational best practices, as you know, we have recommended and, you know, that we have made a case for. That was a result that we achieved in 2021 for the trees that PG&E cut down after the lightning fires, that was a direct advocacy approach. It's, a positive outcome there is by no means guaranteed, but it is always at a minimum helpful to have FaceTime with the regulators, with the directors of the agencies, because if and when it comes time to file a formal complaint or otherwise escalate the process in a more formal manner, they're familiar with the issues, they understand what's happening, and hopefully are, you know, already predisposed to really listen to the requests that we're making. The other avenue is a formal complaint to the CPUC, it would allege that PG&E is violating any number of commission orders and, you know, rules that PG&E is obligated to follow. I think the first and foremost is just the obligation to provide safe and reliable service. If PG&E is actively creating a fire hazard out in its communities, that is not safe, that will ultimately not be reliable either, and there are a number of other CPUC regulations and statutory provisions as well that can correlate to the work that PG&E is actually doing and that, you know, we would posit the rules that PG&E is absolutely not adhering In a complaint context, settlement is likely. The CPUC, they don't, usually when utility behavior is egregious enough, the CPUC will open an investigation and sort of look at all of the bad behavior. We have not seen sufficient appetite from the regulators to open an investigation into the tree-cutting work up to this point, which means that the formal complaint is our next best option, and complaints, just as a matter of course, much like with regular litigation, do settle more often than not, and in this case, if we could reach a settlement with PG&E that would provide commitments for cleaning up after itself and implementing best practices, you know, that would certainly be a good outcome. Or if settlement were not possible, then we would hope for a CPUC decision ordering PG&E to do the right thing and clean up its mess. There, for either one of these options, there's also, I understand, the potential to form a larger coalition amongst the impacted communities with your neighboring counties, and there are a number of communities all through PG&E's Northern Service Territory in particular that are having serious issues with the same PG&E vegetation work where they're destroying property, they're not cleaning up after themselves, and just generally creating a larger fire hazard than arguably existed beforehand. If building a coalition like that is possible, if your fellow counties were interested in doing that, that is a fantastic way to proceed, there's always strength in numbers, and it is also in terms of just the economics of it, sharing fees is, it's better for everybody because you get the, you know, my full attention, my colleagues' full attention, but at a fraction of the hourly rate, and it's a manner of working that I'm really familiar with, having done that on the de-energization side for years, and that work is still ongoing just with a small coalition, and it's a way of working that I personally, I really enjoy. And so with that, I- So with that, I will end the slideshow, and I am happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
It's not much of a question, more so than what is the scope of the actual request? Because I know within the documentation that we had on our agenda item, it says the scope is written within the letter of agreement or the letter provided, but there is no scope within the letter. And so I'd like to better understand what is the proposal. And I think I'm looking at Supervisor Pyska, since I know that you were involved in bringing this to us. What is the idea of what the proposal, the scope, would be?
This work is under County Council.
Well, and certainly Megan, jump in if I'm misstating, but given the presentation that was made, I believe that the scope of work would be for Ms. Samoji to act as the county's liaison with CPUC to develop a better understanding of the programs that PG&E is operating under in Lake County as they're cutting down trees, to be able to take the concerns this board has, as informed by the public, and to move forward to express those through CPUC hearings and perhaps even in direct consultation with PG&E to determine if a resolution can be achieved.
And it's specifically related to the tree trimming of tomorrow, the tree trimming of yesterday? I'm just kind of curious as to what is the expanse of what is it that we're looking to solve, the problem that is currently down on the ground? Or we know there's going to be more tree trimming coming up? So just kind of curious as to what we would be looking for.
Well, I mean, the work is happening right now. So we heard complaints earlier this morning. So we know that this is an issue that's not getting better. We've been trying to work with PG&E for a long, long time on all of this, and it's something that continues to be an issue. I mentioned earlier also that I had a call with RCRC that had set up with 12 other counties or 12 counties total on Friday, which Megan was a part of that call as well. And what we continually ask for is for them to do the work, to clean up after themselves, and to follow their best practices and mitigation efforts. So I think that our County Council laid it out pretty clearly. I'm just, maybe Megan has something else to add.
Or thank you. I think you certainly accurately captured the scope. As a practical matter, I imagine that we would raise to the CPUC the work that PG&E has done in 2022, both as an example of what the problem is and to the extent that PG&E is not cleaning up after itself. I would expect that we would want an order from the commission that the PG&E have to clean up work that it has done already. And then we would also be looking for commitments or directives going forward, hopefully on a permanent basis, but at a minimum for at least the coming year, if not longer, that PG&E has to conduct future vegetation management work in a rational manner that includes cleaning up after itself and whatever other best practices we recommend.
Well, Megan, I have one other question. You pointed out the fact that there is no appeal process for property owners. And that is something that is desperately needed. We had two people earlier here this morning speaking. I get emails and phone calls constantly about a whole combination of issues surrounding not following their protocol and not cleaning up after themselves. And so I think that is one thing that we definitely need, and I don't know if you've worked on that in the past or what that looks like. Just wondering if you could speak a little bit more about that.
Yeah, that will be one of the, I think, more difficult things to achieve in practice for a couple of reasons. One is, as I mentioned, PG&E is desperate to avoid wildfire liability, and so that often leads to situations where the contractors are just sent in regardless. And it also will probably make the CPUC a little reluctant to create a process that could really slow down wildfire mitigation work. But I think there is room, certainly, to advocate that PG&E's workers out in the fields are better trained and better adhere to their actual requirements. And we can certainly propose a limited appeal process where within, it would have to be something like a 10- or 20-day timeline. We could certainly construct a proposal that would not meaningfully hinder wildfire mitigation work. And it's something that the CPUC really does need to be aware of and does need to think about, but I do want to manage expectations upfront that all of the improvements that we would be pushing for, that would be one of the hardest to achieve.
All right. You had another question?
Yeah. So my concern when asking the question of the scope is that does not seem like a small amount of time. It seems like this can get really complicated, can take a long time, and the cost to this is quite steep. And granted, yes, you do come with some background and some experience, but it's still steep. And I'm trying to figure out what kind of hours, what kind of days, what kind of months are we looking at to be able to achieve some of these? Because I've been to some CPUC meetings, they're not efficient and they're not fast. I like the idea of coalition, and I think that if we approach the CPUC, the best bang-for-all buck would be with coalition, to have multiple voices represented rather than just ours. And I know that you said, Vice Chair Pyska, that we've been working. I don't know what the county has been doing. I know you've been working hard to sit down with PG&E and try to accomplish some of these goals, but I don't know that we've checked off every opportunity. And have we sat down to discuss maybe building an MOU with PG&E of what is expected from us and what is expected from them when it comes to fire safety and cleanup of tree removal? Because that, to me, would be something that is within a scope, that I would be in favor of, to say, yes, let's go ahead and join in in a relationship to get that MOU that we could probably get a whole lot better through Ms., and I hope I say your name correctly, Samoji, that because of her experience and her understanding of the processes and the rules and regulations that they have to follow, I think it's Rule 95 or something like that. But going through the CPUC, I don't know what kind of price tag we're looking at, and we haven't really discussed a maximum not to exceed or anything like that either. So that was the reason for my scope-of-service question. But I'm in favor of looking at a coalition. I think voices and numbers is always better. And at that point, joining into an agreement with Ms. Samoji would be great. I would definitely be in favor of that. But if we're going into this unilaterally, I would prefer that the scope be something that we can manage and make sure that we can afford, because at this moment, the scope that we're speaking of is way beyond what I believe is our capability.
Are there any other comments from the board? Or did you have something to add, Ms. Samoji?
I think the sort of concern, considerations about scope of work and costs, very well taken and something that I'm very familiar with. Not to exceed amounts are common in my local government client contracts. And depending on how the county wants to proceed, do you want to just, as an initial phase, focus on trying to work directly with PG&E or doing some of the direct advocacy to the CPUC, which is less time-intensive than a formal proceeding? I can put together cost estimates for that. But you're correct. If we are looking at a formal complaint, that is an extended effort, 12 to 18 months, and it will be time-intensive, which is where the coalition really brings a value in terms of just cost savings.
All right. So go ahead and open this up for the public. Oh, go ahead, Vice Chair.
I thought when we spoke about this a few weeks ago, we had talked about not to exceed $50,000 to begin with.
Right, I'm seeing heads shake, yes.
Yeah, I remember that.
Okay. And so just, that was where County Council brought that up for advocacy with CPUC, not to exceed $50,000. So we hadn't really discussed a complaint, and I do think that that would be more along the lines of the coalition, and those are the conversations that we're having with other counties.
All right. I'll open it up to the public. If there's any comments from the public, please, okay, come on up and state your name for the record. We'll start in three minutes.
Joan Moss, I would like to ask you, what other counties are you already working with? And secondly, I want to know if you're aware of what happened in Mendocino County when the Mendocino County very pointedly asked PG&E to stop their operation, and PG&E stopped. Do you know where that stands presently? Thank you. I'd like to know what you're already committed to and if you heard about what happened in Mendocino County and how that stands.
Sure, thank you. So I am currently working with the counties of Marin, Napa, Sonoma, and San Luis Obispo, and the city of Santa Rosa. We're working on ongoing PG&E de-energization matters. And it's possible Napa and Sonoma may also be having some residual tree-removal issues. I am not aware off the top of my head of the specific incident or the specific matter in Mendocino County. I apologize, I can't provide any additional information about that.
The last one you were looking for, Joan, was the city of Santa Rosa. You got the first three right. The last one was the city of Santa Rosa.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments on this item? Hearing none or seeing none? Wait, one more. Yep. Bring it back to the board. Supervisor Simon.
So just a follow-up question. I know in the memo we got too, I know we were talking about it last time. If we're going to move forward with this contract, what budget unit is the funding coming from? Go ahead, Susan.
Admin.
Okay.
1120.
Any other comments? All right. Looking for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the engagement letter for legal services to address PG&E's wildfire mitigation activities.
Ms. Grant?
One question. Are you going to put a limit on that? We talked about the $50,000.
Yeah. And authorize the County Council to sign with a limit of $50,000.
Okay. Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Conduct the roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you for your time, Ms. Samoji, and we'll look forward from there and move on to our next item on the agenda.
Thank you all. I look forward to working with you.
All right. So let's see, who do we have on? Let's see what we have here in the gallery. Okay, so we will go back to our 5.11. Supervisor Sabatier?
I want to deeply apologize. I did get a response to a late email that I sent, and I would like to see if we can reopen our consent agenda to review item 5.10, and that would require us to back out what we approved, reapprove what still needs to be approved, and pull out 5.10 if that is okay with the chair.
I think we would have to take a vote on it. So do you want to make that motion and see?
Mr. Chair, I move to reconsider our consent agenda items and reopen it. I think that's appropriate.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Please conduct the roll call, Johanna.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
So we'll go straight to that one then. Item 5.10, approved purchase. Ms. Grant, did?
So you're reopening the consent agenda and then removing 5.10 from the consent agenda?
Right. And so the consent agenda is open?
And then reapproving?
All the rest.
Well, not all the rest, because you still have two outstanding...
Because we did one, right? So it's about to get confusing.
I believe you have 5.7 and 5.11. Is it 5.7 or is that one done?
5.7 was already completed.
Okay. So 5.11 and then the 5.10 would be accepted?
Or would be?
Accepted, EX.
Could be pulled.
Yeah, EX.
Sorry, I heard "uh."
No.
Let me open it up to the public first, real quick. Anyone from the public want to speak on this item?
On what, the specific item or?
No, this is for the consent agenda items.
Is 6.5 on the consent agenda?
No, it was on a timed item at 10:30, and it's finished. All right. All right. So I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve, let's see if I remember, 5.1, 5.2, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.8, 5.9, 512, 513, yes, 514, 515, 516, 517, 519, 520, 521, 522, 523, 524, 25, thank you for the help, 526 and 527. I think I got it all correct.
Yeah.
5.7, right? Because we finished that one.
But we approved this separately, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, man.
I didn't want to redo what we've already done. So that is my motion to approve those items as listed.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thanks.
All right. So we will go straight to 5.10, approved purchase order for Heritage Oaks Hospital for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospitalization and Professional Services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalizations in the amount of $50,000, and authorized department head to sign. Supervisor Sabatier, you pulled this, and I see that Elise is with us and April as well.
And so the reason I pulled this and the reason I had a question was I don't know what the scope of service is. It's not... It's not an agreement, it's a purchase order. I emailed our auditor controller and got a response during our meeting today that says that typically our policy states that purchase orders are for supplies or equipment, and contracts and agreements are for, uh, services. And because of that email response that I received, and because we're about to, uh, we've approved $50,000 for something that doesn't have a scope of service, what exactly are we paying for? I know we're holding beds, but it's also for the service. Uh, I just wanted to bring it to our attention that maybe it needs to come back as an agreement, um, rather than a purchase order. And I know we've done invoices that we've paid when it's services that have already been rendered, uh, without, uh, it being on a contract. But this is a purchase order for services that have yet to be rendered, because it's for 2023.
And I think, I don't know if this is, this may answer, it says delivery date completed. Um, but I don't know if that's on the invoice, it says that? But I'll defer to, you know, I'm just seeing that, I don't know if you've seen it too, but Elise, I don't know if you would like to, or April, either or.
Well, I can start. So first, I just want to state, or restate, however, um, that we did issue a request for proposals for these services, received no bids, and also to reiterate that we do not always have control over where Lake County Medi-Cal beneficiaries are placed, or where they're hospitalized, if they are not placed by our crisis team. So if a Lake County beneficiary goes into crisis in any other county outside of Lake and sees anybody else for those services, we may not know. And so we often get, um, I guess you could say surprise bills. And so Supervisor Sabatier, you are correct in that we have used purchase orders to resolve those, um, unforeseen hospitalization services for Lake County beneficiaries for which we are financially responsible. And this is anticipation that we will continue to receive, um, inpatient psychiatric hospitalization and associated professional services for Lake County beneficiaries through Heritage Oaks Hospital that are, um, unanticipated by our plan, because it's not being managed by our crisis team internally.
So these are services that were rendered?
I believe it's a combination of both. And so it's services that have been rendered, and also anticipation of services that may be rendered in order to avoid having to go to the board multiple times for multiple different purchase orders. However, we can certainly revise that practice.
So I know that the title of the attachment is fiscal year 2023, so that's where it started to get a little bit confusing. And if it's split, um, there is not a mention, I believe, um, in anything to say which fiscal year other than the title, and so that was confusing to me. I thought we were just preemptively, uh, doing beds. But I'm still uncomfortable with putting down money without describing scopes of services, at least an invoice that we're paying for. We have the services detailed and what we're paying, but here, we're going ahead and allocating funds to something that isn't described as to what that service will be. So I, I, I'm uncomfortable, uh, with moving forward with, uh, for the future portion of it. Uh, the past, I, I think needs to be paid, that, that one's not questionable to me. Uh, but for the future, I need to see a scope of service in order to feel comfortable to say yes.
All right, any other comments from the board? Supervisor Simon.
Just, just on the conversation to continue it, cuz I know there's a, there's a list of services included on the back. I know it's not a scope of services. You go to page three.
Yeah.
There's somewhat, and I probably, you know, you want something written on a little bit more, but it says included services, non-covered services, so just wanted to, to mention that.
So I'll open it up to the public for any comments on item 5.10. And I'm not seeing anyone, uh, for this item or on Zoom, and I'll bring it back to the board. Uh, Ms. Grant?
I just wanted to point out, I'm sure your board already saw it, but it does say delivery date completed. So that, I don't know that it's clear that it could be a combination of past and future services. So I think for past services, uh, because as Supervisor Simon points out, there is a, a scope provided, I think, just for, and, and your board may prefer something completely different, which is totally within your purview. But for services already provided, there's probably enough with a purchase order from a legal perspective.
Okay. All right. Supervisor.
And I would say what the data provided and the fact that there's no fiscal year in any of our, um, documents here, other than the title of something, I think that I, I would like to see this come back and, and a little bit more clear as to what it costs for fiscal year 21, 22, and what it will cost for 22, 23. And, uh, my preference would be to see the 22, 23 coming back as a normal standard contract, as we usually see, um, for these types of services.
Ms. Grant?
Sorry. One other thing, if this is for future services, and you're talking about essentially beds with services provided, I would think that if you wanna pay in advance when you don't know, you might wanna set it up as kind of a, a retainer agreement.
Elise?
Yes, sorry, I just got further clarification from our fiscal team that we have past invoices, we actually have two clients there presently, so we were doing some projection of those costs associated with the clients that are presently admitted to Heritage Oaks.
Okay. All right. Um, from that, is there any other comments, or are we ready for action on this?
So there's one, I make sure. So current services provided, is that, uh, where we're at now with a couple of patients that are currently there? And that's where the projections come from in the future, that they're already in there, and we're thinking, can move forward with that?
That's correct, Supervisor.
And you're saying that you want to see it possibly next week? And would that hurt, uh, the situation if it, or not hurt, but would it, would it be a constraint i- if, uh, this was brought back next week? Or is this something that just, that needs to be done as soon as possible?
Um, no, we were just trying to be efficient. So from a contractual perspective of the hospital, I don't know that it'll make a great deal of difference in terms of delaying payment.
And it, would it be possible to get that information that I think you were recommending, Supervisor Sabatier? Would it be a difficult situation to do, or would that take more time?
No, it's not difficult, it's okay.
Okay. Of course, that's, that's if the board feels the same way, or if they wanna take action now.
You know, I think this is just a challenging conversation as we move forward. And, and the part that is hard for me is our Lake County residents that have issues out of county. So, you know, we can't anticipate if somebody travels to, you know, Sonoma or somewhere else. And, you know, if that is the case, and I've heard that multiple times, that, you know, it makes it a real challenge as we're moving forward. I understand, I agree with Anita's point, um, about a retainer, uh, contract or something for future beds, which I think might be something we should, or at least your department should look into, to see if we could do that. So we're not having the same conversation every time, but, um, you know, I, I, I myself am prepared to move forward. I'm, I'm gonna make a motion and then see where it goes. But I will, I am going to add in there the term, oh, what was it? I just forgot it.
Can, can I make a quick comment before you do make a motion?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Refunded, or what, what did you call that, Anita?
Retainer.
Retainer, or retainer agreement, okay.
Um, my, my concern is there's a lack of specificity for what fiscal year we're talking about. And usually, especially when it comes to accounting, we wanna be clear as to what it is that we're paying for. And here, we're paying for $50,000 for services incurred in one fiscal year, and services not yet incurred in a next fiscal year. And there's no delineation as to what that is. Um, obviously, it's a round number, 50,000 was chosen, rather than a specific number of what is owed, because it's a projection as well as what's owed. But I feel it needs to come back with some better specificity of what it is that we're exactly paying for, cuz it's not very clear, and I don't know that accounting practices are being followed if we just say yes to $50,000 without understanding how that separates within the fi- the fiscal year of financing.
So at this point, I'll, you know, obviously, we'll defer to the department. Um, so with some of the questions that have been asked, but motion's not made today, and it's pushed to next week, think you'll be able to have that information at that point?
Of course.
All right. If it's, if it's possible, then we'll go that route? All right. All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Jones and, uh, Ms. Giambri. We'll go ahead and bring this back forward next week, and, uh, we'll be looking for that information. Thank you. So for that, this one will be continued till next week. Um, next, let's move on to 5.11. Waive the formidable, uh, formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, and is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services. And B, approve the agreement between County of Lake and Kingsview Professional Services for MIS support services for FY 22 and 23 in the amount of $158,469, and authorize the board chair to sign. Supervisor Sabatier, I think you pulled this?
Uh, yes, I did. Um, I pulled it, uh, I wanna say three weeks ago, because it didn't have the waiving of the bidding. And then I pulled it again last week, but it was pulled by Director Metcalf, uh, cuz I made a statement to him that I disagreed, that I think we need to go out for an RFP, because this is not a unique service. Um, today, what we have in front of us has a different reason, um, as to why it is a unique service, and I disagree with it. I, I think that, um, we are in October, uh, we're looking at a 22, 23, um, contract, and, uh, the timeliness of it should not have an impact as us doing our due diligence of going through these processes, uh, vetting our, our bids that we receive, and then bringing this to the Board of Supervisors for approval. Um, we were told at one point that Kingsview is the only one who does this. That is not correct. I've had a conversation with Cerner, the company that does Anasazi software for us. Uh, and there, we have the capability of doing this ourselves in-house, if we were trained for it and we had the capacity for it, uh, and others are able to do it for us as well. Uh, this is not the only agency out there that can do that.
Right, uh, any other comments from the board? Uh, staff, is there anything to add to that, or any comments?
Yes, um, while it may be true that there are other entities who provide supportive services to Anasazi Electronic Health Broker, as noted in the agreement, we have been working with Kingsview since 2006 to manage and administer the system. And so for us, the continuity perspective, they understand our system, they understand our local system. Um, that's critical to ensuring the success and the successful migration into a new EHR. And as far as taking this work in-house, I agree that would be ideal. However, at this time, we do not have the capacity, uh, to take that project on.
All right. We will open it up to the public, uh, to see if there's anyone that wants to comment on item 5.11. All right, not seeing anyone online or in the chambers, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, see if it's seconded. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Nay.
Thank you.
And so, uh, with that, do we even go to B?
A tie vote for your board is a no action, which is the same as no.
Which would mean that we're requesting for an RFP process at that point in order to move forward?
Or at the very least, for the department to go back and offer perhaps more substantial information as to why it falls within one of the exceptions under 38.2.
Yeah, and I'll just expand on, well, I was ready to move forward on that is, you know, I always understand when you go on migration of a system, I can clearly understand once you get through that to go to the RFP process. But someone, you know, just in the memo reading it and, um, you know, has extensive experience with that, so that's where my motion came from, in, in that continuity, and understanding the challenges of each, each department that we have to taking things in-house as we get more folks in and capacity, I think that's definitely where we need to go. So that was my, uh, the reason I made the motion.
You said that earlier. Is there a way we can, uh?
I, can I say, I, I agree, and, you know, going through a migration is a really vulnerable time, and, um, you know, a lot can go wrong, and I think it's important to, um, you know, have this partner to get, get us through this migration.
With that, with that explanation, I don't mind, uh, reopening this and taking the vote again if necessary. Um, but I would like to see RFP and the effort to conduct this when, when the contract's up for next time.
Oh, may I add something? There won't be another contract up for next time, because the migration includes these supportive services. It's all rolled into one. So we have, uh, coalesced and consolidated all of this work into one provider who will provide an all-inclusive solution, have, which has already been approved by our board. So literally, this just needs to carry us through to about March of 2023, and then we'll be done with them.
Then I, I still, I'll look to.
Do we need to reconsider them, uh, the vote?
Uh, yes, the contract provides that it terminates on June 30th, 2023. But certainly, your board can also give direction to staff if there should be any further need. Uh, long-term contracts with the same contractor as your board knows can present various difficulties for a public entity. But here, it sounds as if you stated reasons, and it's not even a year's length of time to perform these final tasks.
All right. So, um, I'll have to resend my vote, I guess, or?
Take it up for rehearing, so a motion to rehear the item.
So a motion, uh, there's a motion to rehear the item?
I move to rehear, uh, the item.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Uh, Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Thank you.
And so, uh, do I have to read it, read it again and all that, or, okay?
No, I think all you have to do now is, um, mark.
Public input, and then, uh, bring it back for action?
You can bring it then, and then you can bring it back for action, and you'll take action to rescind the earlier motion, and then just make a new motion.
All right.
Didn't we just resend it?
No, we just motioned to open it.
That was to rehear.
Sorry.
And so if, uh?
I may have said resend.
It's okay.
You, you meant rehear.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, that was clear, sir. You're fine.
Go ahead, uh, well, so we'll open it up to the public in case there's anyone that wants to, uh, speak on this item or the discussion that's taken place so far. Not, not hearing any, we'll bring it back to the board, uh, and if there's a motion to resend, and then we'll conduct another vote, right?
So, Mr. Chair, I will move to resend the previous vote on this item.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Uh, Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I now move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County, Section 38.2, it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Uh, Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Kingsview Professional Services for MIS support services for FY 22, 23 in the amount of $158,469 and zero cents, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll. With that, we'll close those items from the consent agenda and move on to our non-timed items, which is, next would be, let's do 7-4. Consideration of Resolution Authorizing an Amendment to the Standard Agreement Between County of Lake and Department of Healthcare Services for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023, and authorizing the Behavioral Health Director to sign the amendment to the standard agreement. And this is Elise, I think, or April.
I'll start us off.
All right.
So yes, thank you so much. As you all are aware, we recently had a tribal 638 clinic provider of narcotic treatment program services open up next door in Mendocino County, which is great because that means that a lot of folks who were going further away can come closer. Why is that relevant to this standard agreement? Because these services, due to the reimbursement rates, are on paper a lot more expensive than what we have seen historically for NTP services due to the fact that they're provided by the 638 clinic and may charge an all-inclusive rate. And April, of course, can clarify and expand upon that. And so in order to accommodate those costs and those mandated services, we must amend our agreement with the Department of Healthcare Services as the Drug Medicale Plan to provide a mechanism of reimbursement for those incurred costs. April?
Yes, thank you, Elise. April Gambrera, Lake County Behavioral Health Services. I just wanted to highlight that this allows our state plan contract to expand to cover the cost of not only the services provided by New Life or the tribal 638 clinic, but it encompasses everything that we do for our Drug Medicale Services as a behavioral health department, including our subcontractors and providers. So this increase is an increase to cover the anticipated or projected costs for all services. And without having this increase, we place ourselves at risk of not being able to get remittance or payment from Department of Healthcare Services for services provided during the course of the three-year contract. That's primarily because we've already exceeded our previous contract. So the increase in this contract, in my opinion, is unprecedented, as with being the only state plan county who has the availability of a tribal 638 service provider within traveling distance for our beneficiaries. Much like our previous agenda item, individuals do not need prior authorization to be able to access these services. And so we had to do a lot of shuffling, as I'm sure your board is aware, and impromptu meetings with the state to figure out payment mechanisms, reimbursement amounts, reimbursement mechanisms, billing mechanisms. Like there's, we've really been trailblazers in this area, and so I, although it's been very painful for our board, our community, and our department, I just would like to say on behalf of our department and our beneficiaries, thank you. I'm really honored to be a part of this. And so I'm looking forward to answering any questions that you guys have. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So this is, this is one that, out of all the items on our agenda, this one poses me the greatest turmoil in my mind. Last year, we needed to borrow some money just to pay the bill, which was 1.6. We started out at 400, went to 850, eventually went to 1.6. Already, and I'm going to speak specifically to New Life, even though this is not the contract that's in front of us, but it's part of what the reimbursements are for. Already, we've spent, just in the month of July and August, $600,000 plus, I think it's closer to 650. We do not have a contract that, I hope we can remedy that sooner than later. If you start doing the math, we're looking at potentially $3.6 million for the total year. And I know in speaking with Behavioral Health, Ms. Gambrera, that the idea, at least with New Life, is they won't get paid until we get reimbursed by the state. Now, the 26 million we're looking at is not just with New Life. So some of my questions are, is everyone going to be waiting for us to be reimbursed by the state before we owe them money? And that still leaves a lot of room for other services, and eventually, it is our liability if New Life ever says, we changed our mind, we need to get paid because the state's taking too long to pay you. And I don't know where we find the money within our finances to cover this large increase, which before was about 1.6, 1.2 million, 1.4 million? I forget where it started. It's crossed off, so it's hard to read. But, and also, the exhibit that's in front of us, I don't know if it covers or doesn't cover New Life, which I'm told it does, but it's not up to date if it says we only had $600,000 last year. So is the last year's bills being added into the '22-'23 because it doesn't make sense for what we paid for '21-'22? But I'm highly concerned that eventually, the bill will drop on Lake County, and we don't have the finances to cover up to $26 million worth of services, especially if it's entitlements where we have no choice but to pay it. I also have a concern, why is Mendocino not contracted with this tribal 638? Because you're saying here that this is a rate that we've never seen, so we're paying more for these same services than we would if we didn't have such a contract. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of confused as to, we're paying more for it, the people whose backyard that they're in, in the Mendocino County region are not, no one else is doing this. I know that there's the idea of pioneering, but I'm also very concerned, especially when I see that we have the ability to spend up to $26 million, and we do, you don't have that in your reserves. We don't have that in our reserves, and I'm very concerned that one day, the shoe will drop, and we have to actually pay something that we cannot afford to actually pay. So I don't know what the answer is, but I know that I needed to share those concerns. I would love to see something more within a range that is manageable within your own reserves than this large number that just kind of creeps me out.
There is a lot of questions that I want to address, and I don't think I'm going to be able to recall all of your concerns. But what I would like to say is, I'll start backwards. I can't speak on behalf of Mendocino County, but I know that Mendocino is part of the regional model of the organized delivery system. Because they did not carve out NTP services, they are trying to figure out a reconciliation process. They, from what I understand, this is currently quite a burden. But regardless, they are still charged the 640 rate. They are still entitled to that rate. It doesn't change by county. It is the federal register reimbursable rate for the services that they provide. What does change for them is their reimbursable rate. So when I say that we pioneered, because we read the information notices and our standard terms and conditions of our state plan contract and follow the letter to the law, we are eligible for that 640 full reimbursement, which is pioneering. Others have spent their investments avoiding being accountable for that service, avoiding partnering with those contracted providers, and so, or they haven't had the opportunity to kind of iron out these type of things. Whereas with our department, I personally sat in several meetings and agreed and encouraged our department to do the right thing, which was contract, which makes us eligible to receive those services. So because we went into contract, we did the right thing, we will be getting full reimbursement to the projection statement of 26 million. The, as you indicated, 3.4 is what we're really looking at for New Life, and we've only had 90 days where we've started to get payments in. During the close of the fiscal year last year, the state said that they weren't going to authorize any payments. It's been an experience. First, they didn't have a mechanism for making payments to a state plan county. Then they had to develop, or they had to close out their end of year before they can start making payments to us. And in the last 90 days, as indicated, it's been, I believe, 500 or 600 and something thousand dollars that we've received. I don't or cannot explain why there's been this inconsistency with why they're reimbursing some services from different periods and then others are taking longer. I don't know, but there's been several conversations, and we have the interments or the payments to show that we are receiving that $640 full reimbursement. So we do have documentation to show that the money is coming. I understand the concern, the dollar amount is quite large. I did want to clarify that we borrowed that money that we previously needed to cover those expenses from our realignment dollars. Your question about, or statement about, question about other entities having to wait, there is standardized billing process that happens, and so we must submit up to the state, and then we get reimbursement, and then we make payment. Correct me if I'm wrong, Elise, did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And so it is that they already, or we already, as providers ourselves, wait for that payment as part of our standardized payment process. So this is nothing different. It's just before, we were trying to iron out all of the, and close out last year's, last fiscal year's payments before coming into this year. I believe that's why we chose to pay them. Is that correct, Elise? I'm sorry. Do you recall, our fiscal manager isn't here today, and I'm trying to remember.
One more time, I'm sorry.
So he, there was a question about why we made those payments, and the fact that they're not getting paid until we get paid is new, and I'm just curious, why was it that we made payments before without getting paid first?
Because in our fiscal year 21-22 contract, which reflects the beginning of our relationship or anybody's relationship with New Life for these services, that tribal provision of the non-federal share had not been dreamed up yet, and it was through a collaboration with New Life Clinic and their management company consultants, who recognizing that this could potentially place an undue financial burden on the county to essentially float the funds, were voluntarily willing, again, to provide up that non-federal share cost. And so actually, the last amendment that we brought forth for New Life Clinic does include that provision, and the current contract that is in draft for fiscal year 22-23 also includes that provision of the non-federal share. Now, of course, just because the contract states that it is up to, there's the contract maximum 26 million and some change, does not mean that we are obligated nor will use that entirety. That is, that is just the maximum, right? And so it was in collaboration with DHCS determined that an overestimation would be more beneficial to us than falling short and having to do another contract amendment. We did not want to jam up the work, so to speak. So that's where we're at with that. And also to further clarify, Mendocino County and other counties in the regional model of organized delivery system, which we are also hopeful to join here soon, those counties' partnership health plan, as the managed care plan, contracts with all of the providers on behalf of the counties. And so at that, my understanding is that partnership is actually contracted with New Life Clinic on behalf of counties for beneficiaries in the organized delivery system. However, it's important to note that partnership as an entity is not eligible to receive a voluntary contribution from the tribe because it must be a government-to-government transfer. I am not an expert in that. It's a very superficial knowledge that I have, but I'm articulating it as best I can. So the position that we're in is actually pretty advantageous because we have done a lot of learnings. And in our entry to the organized delivery system, it will be imperative, and we're aware of the need to carve out and essentially hold out New Life or tribal 638 provided services from the contract with partnership because that would get in the way of that funding float. So that, and yes, it is also new, that unprecedented, that we would not, normally, you have to pay an invoice to a contractor for services, and then you submit that cost up and you're reimbursed, right? This is brand new, where the state recognizes that we don't have the ability to float that kind of cost, and so therefore, they are willing to allow us to be reimbursed and then pay our bill.
So just a quick question. You mentioned reimbursed also with tribal 638. Does that mean you'll be working with tribal health in that capacity?
At present, tribal health in Lake County does not provide any specialty mental health or drug medicale services.
Okay.
They provide mental health services for the mild to moderate population, so.
All right.
But were they to dip their toe in the water and want to provide those services? Yes, we would have an obligation.
Well, I mean, you mentioned the 638 reimbursements, and so I just, I just thought maybe they were included somehow, because I know that...
They are not, however, they are a tribal 638 clinic, and so of course, they are also reimbursed at that daily base rate of 640. So it's just that they are not providing drug medicale or specialty mental health services. Where New Life is a clinic that opens specifically to provide those DMC entitlements.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, and just one comment on what was stated. You said that we do not have to, or we don't plan to spend up to the 26 million, but we also stated that there's no need for referrals or approvals that anyone can walk in and get that service. So it's really out of our hands, and it's possible that there could be $26 million. And there's also the possibility that we create a situation where we do not get reimbursed because we submit bad bills, bad reimbursements. It's possible. I've worked before in the hospitals. You can get denied by medicale for services, and that's where I get worried, is that it is not 100% guaranteed at all, and that number is so large, that's where I get concerned. I also forgot to mention one thing, which prohibits me from approving this until at least next week. I know it's coming next week, is your contract does not allow for this level of expenditure, your contract. Your budget does not allow for this level of expenditure, and I, in my opinion, that needs to come before we approve for expenditures that go above and beyond what was budgeted and approved.
Happy to address any of those. So I'll start with the first one last. Our budget, we do have a budget for resolution to revise our fiscal year 22-23 budget to increase appropriations to cover this. And I would like to reiterate that without having this standard agreement amendment in place, we are essentially excluded from any reimbursement. So it's imperative that we are able to have this appropriation with DHCS. Otherwise, we will not receive any reimbursement because we are exceeded, we have exceeded our contract maximum presently, and that also includes services that are provided in-house. Yes, we do provide DMC services in-house on an outpatient basis, and that revenue supports those services. So...
And I just wanted to further that. I don't know the ramifications, but I know they would be very significant if we ourselves or our contracted providers like Hilltop or RCS were not able to perform their services because we did not have a current or active contract in place. So I hope that we can get that resolved as quickly as possible. And I also do want to comment, there is in fact the potential for denied claims. There is room for error, of course, in those, and so I do want to acknowledge Mr. Sabatier or Chairman Sabatier, board member, Sabatier, I'm sorry. I do want to acknowledge space and say that there is a chance for denials, but I do not believe that those denials would surpass. I think that they would be minimal. That's what I'm trying to say.
So what I'm, what I'm possibly hearing, and maybe correct me, is with the denials that you're mentioning, let's say that there's a potential reimbursement, and then there's a denial. That would be conducted in the verification process when they're going through? And then usually, and I know we talked about this with the, I think it was with the partnership discussion, a lot of the work gets done on the back end to reimburse. And so that would be very similar here, so they'd end up finding out, okay, this person does fit that, we'll pay it, and if it doesn't, then we end up eating that cost, or they find a way to bill it somewhere, right?
Well, I would also like to say that if, so they are the service providers, so if there was a... So if there was a denial, odds are it would be because of something that they have done, which they would assume that cost. So um, it would not be us that would assume those costs. It would be us if we, like, for example, if we um exceeded the timeframe allowable for billing up to the state, if that was our fault. But other than that, if it was because the service didn't meet the qualifications or during the reconciliation process with them, they would bear that burden for the majority of those claims.
Yes, we don't pay contracted providers generally for services that are denied. And um, I would have been ideal to bring forth a budget resolution, I guess, today at the same time. However, it seems to me that without the proof of uh revenue coming in to support that amendment or resolution needed to change our budget, it would not, from my perspective, make sense to bring the budget resolution before the um, the amendment to the standard agreement demonstrating this increase in revenue.
Any other comments from the board? And I think I already opened it up for public input. Am I accurate on that? I really don't remember either.
No one remembers.
Just in case, I will open it up for public input one more time on this item. And I'm not seeing anyone, so I'll bring it back to the board for potential action.
So are we offering a resolution or motioning to adopt the resolution? I'd like to offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered. Please conduct the roll call, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Supervisor Peiska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. Right. With that, uh, 7.4 carries. So let's move on to 7.5. Consideration of Amendment Number Three to the Agreement Between County of Lake and North Valley Behavioral Health LLC for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services Associated with Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospitalization for Fiscal Year 2021 and 22 in the amount of $911,380. And authorize the board chair to sign. All right, uh, Elise.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Crandall. So as stated in a memo, in the memo, and I wanted, obviously, this is not going consent because of such a large dollar amount. But we essentially learned that we were responsible for payment of services way after the fact. There was a client emplacement that did not have Medical um because they had been incarcerated when they were admitted to the facility. Uh, once their incarceration, incarceration ended, their Medical was reinstated back to um their admission date. And therefore, we became liable and we did not receive those invoices until late August. And then we had to sift through all of the Medical issues. Um, and of course, it's important to note and critical to note that these services are 100% reimbursable by the Department of Healthcare Services. So the entirety of the $911,380 is something that we will receive back in reimbursement.
All right. Any questions on this item? I'm gonna open it up to the public for any questions. Not seeing any, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Amendment Number Three of the Agreement Between County of Lake and North Valley Behavioral Health LLC for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services Associated with Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospitalization for Fiscal Year 2122 in the amount of $911,380. And authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Uh, Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Peiska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. Motion carries. And uh, we'll move on to 7.6. Consideration of A, waiving the formidable, the, I keep saying formidable, formidable.
It is formidable.
The the agenda's formidable, sorry. Uh, waiving the formi- formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. And B, Agreement Between County of Lake and the Regents of the University of California-Davis in the amount of $510,981 for Early Psychosis Intervention Program Evaluation Services for FY's 22 and 23 through 25 and 26. And authorize the board chair to sign. And I think this is also Elise.
This is. Thank you, Chair Crandall. And I do agree, this agenda is formidable. So this is really just a chance, um, again, high dollar amount. Um, so I want to have a chance to discuss for for the the public and your board feeling like there's transparency. We've actually been working on this agreement for um over a year, essentially ever since our department was awarded the Early Psychosis Intervention Grant from the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission. And part of that grant is a 25, I believe, 25, 20 or 25% of your budget, of the total grant budget you must put towards this technical assistance. And it is so incredible because here we have the University of California-Davis, who is the um convener of uh UCSF, also working with Harvard, also working with a variety of other educational institutions, with the premier experts in the field of early psychosis intervention to develop um a first-of-its-kind um statewide tracking mechanism for early psychosis intervention programs. So not only will they help us track our county, specific county-level data to determine how we're meeting against standardized benchmarks and our implementation plan for the grant, but also we can compare the aggregate data across counties to look at how our county is performing on those benchmarks relative to other counties with the overall goal of um using that data to inform our practices so that we can better ameliorate uh the symptoms of early psychosis for a vulnerable population. There's significant data that shows that early and intensive intervention, intervention um and treatment of these symptoms actually can result in people who are essentially symptom-free and don't have to live in a specialty in a healthcare system and can go out and live really pretty normal lives for whatever that's worth. So just to get a a chance to talk about the high dollar amount, the value of it, and um to present that work that's really important to our department, to your board and the public.
All right. Let's see. Are there any uh questions at this time? Not seeing any. Open it up to the public for any comments on this item. And not seeing or hearing any, I'll bring it back to the board for potential action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services and approve the agreement between County of Lake and the Regents of the University of California-Davis in the amount of $510,981 for Early Psychosis Intervention Program Evaluation Services for Fiscal Years 22, 23 through 25, 26. And authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Johanna, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Peiska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, uh, Elise and April uh for for your uh assistance with some, with these uh agenda items. And uh with that, it looks like we've gotten through this uh agenda. Um, we will now move on to our closed session items, which is uh 9.1, Conference with Legal Counsel: Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2E1 One Potential Case. 9.2, Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 In Re-National Prescription Opiate Litigation MDL Number 2804, Case Number 17MD2804. And 9.3, Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 City of Clear Lake versus County of Lake et al. And with that, we will go into closed session.